They can't hear us.
I can hear you.
Oh, you can, Jacob? Okay, it's really loud in here.
Our video isn't able to turn on.
Right.
Oh, I see. Okay, hang tight.
Let me see if I can fix that.
Sorry, y'all. Can one of you say something? We're working on the volume.
Yeah, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you. I think that's a little bit better. Thank you.
There's music playing, just to know.
Yes, thank you. I can hear it tinkling in the background, very far away.
The piano is rather loud elevators for us.
It is.
Okay, we'll see if we can fix that a little bit. It's still messing with the volume. It's not real loud. Sure, yeah, so we are live. We are just working on the video issue.
Working, the only way for us to hear them is to have microphones up.
Do you know anything, Josh, do you know anything about them? Do you want to come help?
Yeah.
We'll take one. It's a village.
It's a setting?
Yeah, it's a setting. Do you actually want to go to like, is there like a participant stand?
Yeah.
You've become bad. The up arrow next to that?
Yeah.
Probably more. You'd like to be more?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Solve this issue before, but I can't remember.
I feel like it actually might have been in the meeting process, which it's not.
It doesn't say anywhere here allow participants to.
I feel like I've also solved this issue before.
Yeah. Kind of try the videos. Just turn it on.
Oh, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And there's very few options, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
What are I'm gonna do? I think they have room with outposts.
Yep. So I could. Really feels like you should be able to do it even more than this.
Nicole's gonna come up.
Okay.
Our city recorder, Assistant City Recorder, is downstairs, and she is coming upstairs to see if she can solve the video issue, just as an update.
Great, thank you.
Yep, sorry.
I'm gonna change the polls.
Yes.
And my thoughts are I could be into the meeting and see if I can change the settings. It's a little annoying.
I thought maybe I locked myself out of the present computer earlier.
Oh.
And I thought maybe that's what had happened here. So everyone is here. We're here. Everyone, we just can't see.
Thank you. And this is the message they're getting.
It's stopped. Okay, let's see.
This is who knows how is staying.
Okay. You don't have, do you have Zoom on this phone at all?
Um, I think Zoom is downloaded on it, but it's.
It's not, but it's not locked in on it.
It's not.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, and then Josh.
Can somebody try to guess?
Ah, there we go. Okay. Good job. That was you. That was.
That was teamwork. Thank you.
No, I did nothing. Sometimes you just need somebody to stay with you, and you can figure it out. That's the way it works.
We got it.
Sorry for the delay, y'all.
Want to be the planning commission without some tech issues.
Um, all right. Yes. Hang on just a second.
Great. Sounds like, are we ready to go, Laura?
Yes. We are.
Fantastic. Um, well, why don't we get started? Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome you to the regular meeting of the Milwaukee Planning Commission. Agendas and additional copies of staff reports are available on the city website at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov. You can locate them by navigating in the community calendar where tonight's meeting page is posted. If you have not reviewed the agenda, please do so. It contains important information about the process. Our first order of business is our native lands acknowledgement. Prior to that, though, my fellow planning commissioners, I'm sick and would prefer not to talk and facilitate the meeting for the next few hours. So I'd like to ask Vice Chair Freeman if you'd be willing to kind of step in and facilitate his chair tonight, and I can just hang out as a participant?
I'm happy to help out, Chair Sherman.
Wonderful. Well, I'll let you take it from here then. Thanks so much, Josh. Appreciate it.
No problem. Excuse me. The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Klakamis people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Klakamis signed the Lammington Treaty, also known as the Kaipua Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. Okay. Moving on to item 2.0, the minutes. Moving on, we're gonna move, moving on to the approval of the amendments from the April 9th, 2024 meeting. Do any commissioners have any corrections to make? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the notes as presented. All move that we approve the minutes as distributed?
I will second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Well, okay, sounds like it's unanimous, all ayes. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number three, informational items. Are there any informational items from staff?
I do have a couple of things tonight. Excuse me. One, I wanted to let everybody know that Amy Ert has resigned from the planning commission, if you weren't already aware of that. We've just opened up our boards and commissions recruitment, and it's closed, and we're going through the interview process now. So we should have a new planning commissioner assigned that will start in July. And then we've also started back up with the alternate appointments. So in case somebody did step down from the planning commission, we could just go to this person who's going to be appointed the alternate, and that person can step right in without us doing another recruitment. So you will have a new member sitting with us starting in July. So there's that, and I just wanted to, since Amy Ert isn't here tonight, I just wanted to thank her so much for the time that she spent on the planning commission. She was a key during the transition when we were in the pandemic, and we all had to pivot, and Amy was always there, and I can't thank her enough for her service. And so I just wanted to share that with everybody, and thank you, Amy Ert, if you're out there listening. We really appreciate your time here on the Milwaukee Planning Commission. I see heads nodding. I think your fellow former commissioners are thankful and grateful as well that you spent the time with them. And then just a second little thing, a nice little surprise from us. Ryan, our fellow coworker here, has been promoted to associate planner. So I just wanted everybody to know that is a big step for Ryan. He's been working really hard. And bravo to Ryan for handling the tough topics. So glad that you're with us. And then I also wanted to just provide a little update on the Neighborhood Hubs project. As you all know, we spent a lot of time talking about hubs, and we've spent also some time talking with the city council about it, of course. And we had a hearing with the city council last week, and that hearing has been continued until July 16th. And so there were still some kind of outstanding questions regarding the hubs. One was related to the zoning that is being suggested for Milwaukee Floral. The owner of that property is kind of thinking about the future and what they would like to do with that property. And so the city council gave them a little bit more time to determine how they would like that property, or at least weigh in on how they would like their property to be zoned. And so that has been put on for July 16th. The other part of that is there was also some questions regarding some of the proposed, or some of the uses that might be allowed in the Neighborhood Hubs. And so there was some conversations around that, and so we will continue those conversations with the council in July. So I just wanted everybody to know that we were hoping that it was going to be adopted last week, but we're still moving forward with it in the hopes that it can get adopted in July. And with that, I think I'm all out of informational items.
Great. Thank you for that update. I think definitely everyone on the commission is thankful for the service of Commissioner Amy. We're sorry to see her go, but we definitely enjoyed her participation in our meetings. Also, congratulations to Ryan. Glad to see that there's some promotion going from within. So congrats there. And now I'll move on to item number four, audience participation. I'm not sure, is there anyone in the audience there?
There is not. There's no one online or in the audience here.
Okay, so I think we can skip that item and move on to item number five. Let's see, at this point in the agenda, the commission will act as the community involvement advisory committee. Although I'd like to hold off on any discussion or updates until the session, until the work session item where the commission and staff will discuss an overview of the CIAC.
And Commissioner Sherman, I'm sorry. I just, I wanted to note that Commissioner Carpenter isn't here tonight, and he's the one who requested the overview of the CIAC. So I would maybe propose us not having that conversation tonight, and I can bring it back to you the next time that there's available slot. But it's up to you all, but he's not in the room, and he's the one who wanted to get most up to speed. Although we do have a couple more folks, obviously, that could benefit from that dialogue as well. But I just thought I would let you all know.
I think we can pull the commission, but I would be in favor of putting it off until he's here. Commissioner Edge?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Yeah, I think this would be a good idea to put it off until, I mean, I don't want to say put it off until July when we have the new commissioner appointed, but you know, almost, you know what I mean? It's like we, if we have someone that's coming on, you know, it'd be helpful for everybody who's new, who hasn't had any of that discussion in the past, to be able to benefit from, you know, from that work session. So, you know, that's just my two cents is I'm okay with pushing it off as long as we think is appropriate without needlessly delaying it.
And I.
Commissioner, Chair Sherman?
Thanks, Vice Chair Freeman. I think I agree with Commissioner Edge. I'd say, you know, let's push it off tonight since Commissioner Carpenter isn't here, or I'd propose we do that. You know, if we wait till July for a new commissioner to be seated, you know, we could do that. I think alternatively, we could also just do it before then and ask them to watch that session and tune in and listen. But I think that would just be kind of my proposal, but Laura, I appreciate you flagging that Commissioner Carpenter isn't here. So I do think it would make sense to postpone. Thanks, Vice Chair.
And Vice Chair Freeman, if I could just add. So coming up, I just want to kind of look at the schedule for a second, because we are not meeting on May 28th, and we are meeting on June 11th, and we have three hearings on June 11th. So that's a lot to get through. Then June 25th, we may have another natural resources conversation, but that might also get pushed to July. So the next optimal time might in fact be July 9th. But we can kind of, I keep you posted if we're gonna have anything on June 25th, but it would seem if we just waited one more meeting, we could have the new person in on the conversation as well. So that's just something, why don't we check in next time we talk and see what we want to do?
Yes, I think it definitely makes sense to have the feedback and information for the new members. It's definitely helpful. It was definitely one of the questions I had when I first got on to the commission as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay. I think that moves us on to item number six, the work session items. This work session item is review of the draft TSP goals and policies. Planning manager Laura and assistant planner Ryan will present the information for discussion.
All right. Well, thank you so much. I didn't provide, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation because I think kind of their process that we went through in the staff report kind of outlines how we got here. But I'll just give a brief overview of that. So the goals and policies for the TSP are also the goals and policies in our comprehensive plan. And if you all weren't aware, I think we may have talked about this before, but the only goals and policies that weren't developed as part of the comprehensive plan were these transportation goals and policies, because we knew that this transportation system plan was happening. So one of the first things that we needed to do during this process was to develop those goals and policies. And so what we did is we looked at all of our existing plans. So we looked at our comprehensive plan, we looked at our climate plan, we looked at Metro's regional transportation system plan, we looked at the Oregon Transportation Planning Rule, we looked at the Milwaukee Vision Statement, the Milwaukee Innovation Area Plan. We had looked at a lot, a lot of plans in order, because there's been so much work that's been done around talking about transportation in the city, that we thought that starting from a baseline of a long, many years of conversation with the community, which was the way to start drafting these goals and policies. And I will commend Ryan. He did a really heavy lift on looking at all of these plans and then started grouping them around themes that we saw. And then we kind of edited them for brevity, made sure we. And then we kind of edited them for brevity, made sure we removed repetition, we did the best that we could. A lot of these goals, quite, I mean, policies could frankly fit into different buckets, but at some point you have to decide which bucket you want them to go into. And so we ended up coming up with a draft set of goals and policies. Um, and then we took those to our technical committee for their review. Um, and then we took them to the Transportation System Plan Advisory Committee for review. And then we took them, and so then we revised them. We made the revisions based on the technical committee and the advisory committee. And then we took those revisions out to the community at large. And so we had our community workshop in March where we, um, had 16 people come and have a conversation about the goals and policies. It was the same way that we talked the advisory committee about the goals and policies. We really worked in small groups and went around um, and each group of tables would talk about a set of goals and policies. And so we did that with the community members that attended the workshop. And then we also posted an Engaged Milwaukee survey with all of the goals and policies. And we had 57 people respond to the survey. And then after both of those sets of getting feedback, we went in and we revised the goals and policies based on the feedback that we got. And that is the set of goals and policies that you see before you tonight. It's kind of the same process that we're using for all of the products that we're getting out of the TSP is that we take it through the various groups and committees and then we bring it to you all. And then after we get some feedback from you all, we will revise them again and then we will take them to the City Council for revision. Does anyone have any questions about that process? I am hearing none. Okay, great. And so then I think what we can do is just jump right into that. Jump, just jump right into them. Um, and I don't know, Ryan, if you wanted to add anything, any clarity? Nope? Okay. So we might just, it's the same thing, the way we've done it with the committees is just going through and saying, looking at, say, equity and asking you all if you have any revisions, questions, want to talk about anything under any of the goal statement or the policies under equity.
Um, I have some comments?
Okay, great.
Um, so with, um, particularly with transportation system improvements um, in equity, you know, equity areas or priority equity areas. I'm not sure how, you know, we're phrasing that in, um, uh, in the, in the plan moving forward, but, um, the, uh, or equity focused areas or whatever. Um, I feel like, um, there's, there's some additional things that could be thrown into equity that are, um, really, you know, kind of appropriate and, but, you know, again, like you were saying, might fit into another bucket as well. But, um, you know, particularly things, um, related to, um, reducing, um, you know, uh, um, urban flooding impacts, um, heat island effects, um, you know, access to nature. Um, so like, you know, and trails and things. Um, and then, uh, again, um, you know, resiliency with respect to, um, you know, natural hazard areas that are in equity focused areas. So again, I think, you know, looking at how, you know, I think there could be more here, you know, in terms of, um, policies that we're looking for a project to check off in order to, um, get a high equity rating, you know, in terms of what, you know, how it's scoring in equity goal. And so, uh, you know, we're, we're trying to undo the harm, past harms, you know, as part of what equity is, you know, it's not just about bringing everything to everybody. Um, we're really trying to, you know, do restorative justice. And, um, and so I think that it's important to be able to say, you know, hey, someone is bringing, um, a project, transportation project, equity focused area that's going to increase the trees that are there, increase the shade, you know, reduce urban heat island effect, perhaps provide some component of access to nature, you know, in the communities that didn't have it before. And, um, and doing it with the purpose and the intent of, uh, of meeting that equity goal. And so, you know, it's not just something that just happens to do this casually, incidentally or whatever, because they're putting in street trees, but there's actually thought about where we're putting the street trees and the impact that they're having on that community. Um, and, and then you could say, you know, yeah, this project is doing this extra thing to help meet, you know, the equity goal. And, and so I think that we could think about that a little bit more and maybe bring some more, um, you know, policy elements under this, uh, this goals, uh, the umbrella of this goal.
Do any of the other commissioners have anything to add to that?
Uh, excuse me, I would just add, I would definitely echo a lot of the sentiments that Commissioner Edge had mentioned. Uh, when I was looking through it, um, yeah, there, there are definitely a lot of areas where, you know, some of these items can fall in multiple slots. So it's kind of hard to figure out which ones you want to delineate. Um, but I, when I saw the equity, equity, I was, one of the things I noticed, like in some of the other spots we used, we highlighted like, uh, vulnerable system users. And I also thought that could have been like one of the, the target audience that we would, could focus on for equity as well. Um, I'm not quite sure how, you know, how we want to wordsmith that, but, um, but just trying to make sure that we're encompassing, like, kind of everyone that, you know, could use extra, can use the extra help to, you know, to keep the, kind of in the forefront of minds when we're kind of going through this process. Chair Sherman?
Thanks, Vice Chair. Yeah, I, um, I agree. I think broadly you have an organization challenge in this or what, which goes under, um, you know, what policies kind of go under what goal. Um, and so maybe there are some, some places for some rearrangement here. Um, you know, I think just to maybe kind of dial in on one thing, Commissioner Edge mentioned about kind of green infrastructure and thinking about things like street trees um, and, um, their ability to, you know, not only create more beautiful neighborhoods, but have a positive impact on, on, um, on people in terms of urban heat island effect and positive impact on, on, on our climate goals as well. I kind of wonder, question is, could there be something about, about street trees specifically kind of in this area? Um, so I think those were some of, um, some of my thoughts at the moment.
Okay.
And I don't envy the organizational challenge that you all are grappling with.
Yes, you could move these around quite a bit. It's a real challenge. Okay. I think that we can. So I guess my question is, is, um, don't want to try to come up with changes and edits to the policies right at the moment because it's a little bit more complicated than that. But I wonder if, so what I need to do is I need to take these, this draft goals and policies to the City Council, um, um, in two weeks, I believe it is, or actually it's next week. So I'm wondering if the idea is that if I take your feedback and we do some wordsmithing and then, um, let the City Council kind of know where your thoughts came from and then do some revisions, um, if that will be sufficient for this group or if you feel like I, um, we need to come. I know I'm jumping ahead of myself a little bit, but I'm trying to think through how this process is going to work because I want to be sure that I can respond to some of your thoughts. And so the question is, is do I need to bring these back to you with a, another level of revision before they go to the City Council?
Go ahead, Chair Sherman. You raised your hand like you're supposed to do.
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, I guess maybe just off kind of initial reaction, Laura is, you know, I think you're also going to council for a work session, right? Like, we're not, we're not, the cake isn't, still isn't going to be fully baked at this point. So even after council has their work session with you, um, I would like to think we're still not at 100% because we haven't, you know, voted on this and council hasn't voted on this and all that. And I think maybe if, I guess maybe what I would propose is if you, if you could also, you know, send out an updated version, folks can look at it with a critical eye, look for any kind of red flags. And then if we want to continue to maybe do a little bit of wordsmithing, some tinkering at the edges, um, as we move along, it seems like that would be kind of in bounds. I don't want to, you know, take us back to square one at any point, but, you know, that, maybe that's a little bit of my own thinking here. I certainly welcome your feedback on that as well as, you know, Commissioner Edge has his hand up.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, I think that that's, uh, I think that's a good idea. I think what he was saying is a good idea, what Chair Sherman was saying is a good idea that you could certainly take it, take the conversation to City Council and have a work session with them. I'd love to see this come back to us anyway, you know, before the hearings, you know, before it's time to adopt. I'd like to see, you know, kind of what our final product is and have a discussion about it and see if there's any, you know, I mean, just give the Commission the opportunity to weigh in before, um, it's, it's time to look at the total package and, you know, a public hearing for adoptions. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I think that, um, this still feels really fluid. You know, I mean, and maybe it's, um, you know, all the strikeout and color, you know, different colors in the, um, in the, the text, but it feels really fluid still, you know? And so, um, it'd be great to be able to be a more refined version of this that we think is closer to final, um, you know, when, when that's appropriate. I don't know if June 25th is that day or, you know, if we're looking at, you know, later than that. But, um, but yeah, after this, after State Council has a chance to, to throw, um, their ideas out about what we're looking at here, I think would be good.
Okay.
I'd rather, I'd rather not wait and have a discussion again before they see it, you know, if that's what you were suggesting.
Yeah, no, um, so no, this is, this is good. I think that that, that's a good idea, that they're fluid to a certain extent, but also not that we're going to word, continue to wordsmith them throughout the entire process just to kind of, because we kind of have to at some point. They've got to get to a point because they, they kind of help prioritize projects, right? So there'll be a moment when we need them to kind of not be fluid. Um, so I think what I could do is, yes, take these to City Council and then kind of after they've talked about them as well, we could do another revision and possibly bring it back to you all and then possibly back to City Council as part of another thing that we bring back to them during the TSP process because we're going to go back to them, obviously, at some point. Um, so yeah, I think that's probably the way that we should do it, understanding that there will be, yes, just again, there will be a moment when they're not fluid. Um, but we're not quite there yet, to your point, uh, Commissioner Edge. So, okay. And just so you know, the reason that we brought these as a strikeout to you all is we wanted you to see the changes that had been made based on community comments. That was kind of the reasoning behind bringing this version to you. That's why we didn't clean it up because we wanted you to see that we had made a bunch of revisions based on what we had heard from the community. Um, so maybe what we'll do is, um, I'll, we'll kind of, it'll probably be the same kind of version with City Council. They'll see the strikeout version and then the next round of edits, we will be able to accept some changes. Okay, sorry to get through the process part of that, but I feel like if we have a better idea of how that's going to work. Okay, moving on. Um, if everybody's ready to move on to the climate friendly goals and policies, I'm happy to do that.
Vice Chair?
Thank you, Vice Chair Freeman. Um, yeah, so, uh, again, I've said this before, um, and I don't want to be a broken record, but, um, I think that this goal is trying to do too much. Um, whereas the equity goal I thought was not trying to do enough, particularly now we whittled it down to just two things. Um, but the, uh, the, the, the climate is, is the climate goal is trying to do too much and I'm, I'm really got my eyes hard by looking at that number three. You know, that reflects our, ultimately, the, the, the way that the transportation system projects will prioritize impacts or improvements to, um, natural resources, natural resource areas. And, um, I honestly feel like we should have an entire goal unto itself that is around ecological justice and that really we should be looking at, uh, that should, I mean, there should be a whole, you know, I guess three or four or five things underneath that ecological justice goal that reflects the transportation system trying to repair its, um, the past harms that have been, um, you know, brought upon our natural resources by the transportation system over, over the years. So, um, you know, and, and again, I feel like that's a whole category, you know, and you could have policies underneath that that are, are different ways of, of bringing about, um, you know, ecological justice within transportation systems. And so, um, I really think that we need to rethink this, you know, because again, and again, there's, there's, um, while there, it may be tempting to say, oh, climate is, you know, green and, and nature friendly and, you know, yeah, generally, that's, that's the idea. But, um, just how we were having a conversation the last time we met about how the tree code has certain priorities around, uh, tree canopy in urban areas and the natural resources code has certain priorities around, um, restoration in natural resource areas. There's a lot of overlap, but they aren't always in sync with each other. And, um, and this is the same thing, you could look at it with respect to climate resilience and, um, you know, and, and climate adaptation and say, you know, those are, there's policies that fall under those, those climate goals that, or that climate goal that, um, are not necessarily in the realm of, you know, ecological justice. Um, and then, you know, similarly, you could probably look at the policies that we put in an ecological justice basket and say, yeah, not all of those are necessarily, um, you know, perfectly aligned with, you know, climate goals necessarily, you know, or whatever. But, um, but you see what I'm saying? If I really feel like these are, these are distinct buckets and I'd love to see that reflected here. I'd love to see, and I'd like to hear everyone's thoughts on, you know, whether we should be doing that.
Uh, Commissioner Fiumeir? Did I say that right? Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I have, this is not, this, that question is, is about the process that we're doing? If we can come back to some of this, I feel like as we go through this, since they're kind of intertwined a little bit, we might want to go back. And this is just a question, if we can go back to, for example, if we talk about climate friendly and then we want to go back to equity, just that. And the other question is about the numbers on the policy, the number one, two, three. If that is the ranking order, is that it means that one has priority, one is priority over four or five? Or is just random numbers and how they're organized?
Random numbers, how they're organized, no prioritization.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understood your first question.
Yeah, if we, if we keep moving forward, since we're moving kind of forward um, in, in equity, coming from a friendly transit forward, et cetera, if we can go back later on to one of those prior items that we looked at just to revise or check and anything that we can discuss that might tie back to something? That's just a question.
Yeah, we can do that tonight, yep, with those, with these, yeah, for sure.
Uh, Chair Sherman?
Thanks, thanks, Vice Chair Freeman. Uh, Commissioner Edge, you kind of, you put a lot on the table there. So I will, um, maybe I'll start with kind of my small, my smaller edits or thoughts before your, your bigger question about, is it the right bucket? And should we be thinking about other kind of goals? Um, you know, I think, uh, for staff, in terms of like the goal statement itself, one thing I was just thinking about is, um, in terms of help reduce pollution, right? I don't know if we want I don't know if we want to be more specific and say help, help reduce air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions and work positively to impact the environment. But I just feel like when, when I just read it as like help reduce pollution, I wasn't entirely sure, you know, are we just talking greenhouse gas emissions? Or do we also care about air quality and things like that? So that was kind of a question. In terms of kind of the policies on the first one, I think it would be important to make clear that a low and zero emission vehicle also includes bicycles. And I think other, you know, maybe going to something I had mentioned earlier about green infrastructure on equity, you know, could also see again, and this probably ties in a little bit to what Commissioner Edge was saying, you know, the, the use of, of street trees. And I know it's, you know, maybe kind of there in, in policy, in the proposed policy number three, but, you know, maybe that's something to call out. One thing, and this is maybe a little bit of a global comment, but I'll try and pepper it throughout, is one thing that I really liked in the equity one was the explore and utilize grants language. And like knowing that right now the federal government is making one cent generation investments in a lot of climate transportation stuff, I feel like we should also have explore and utilize grants here. And we should probably, there's probably a few other places kind of as well, but want to just kind of flag that. And then, yeah, in terms of buckets, I, I don't know if I feel totally strong, super strong about what Commissioner Edge was saying, but just, you know, are the, the question of like, are these the right buckets? I, that was a question I had when I was looking at the table, which I understand is a table and doesn't, isn't a final document. But, you know, further down in the document, the goal is parking, period. And it's like, well, is, I don't know if parking is the goal, like in some, like parking is about, is in many ways I think about is about economic vitality and other things. Like the goal is not parking itself. And so I'll, I'll just bite a little bit on what Commissioner Edge was saying around like, are these the right, are we framing some of these things the right way? And that's maybe a specific example of one where I feel like maybe we should think a little bit more about the frame on that one.
Okay, great. A point well taken on the parking goal. I'm not sure that is a goal, good, good comment. And then Commissioner Edge, so I just want to be sure that I understand. You started out by saying that the climate friendly goal is doing too much. And so I, and what I'm hearing you also say is that you want a new bucket for ecological justice, but, and is that true? Is that a goal that you're wanting to include?
Yes, you heard me correctly. I basically want to break out that policy number three under climate friendly and create an ecological justice goal that you could then break out a few policies underneath that.
And do you have language in mind for what the ecological justice goal would be?
You've got an hour to figure it out, Commissioner.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have draft language, you know, I didn't come prepared with draft language for that, you know, it was really just, you know, I mean, I, I know we're, we're in the process, but, you know, we're, we're still as a commission, we're, you know, we're, we're testing concepts here. And then I, you know, I take our thoughts and, and, you know, run with them into the advisory committee meetings we'll be having on Thursday, by the way. And so, you know, it's, I would be happy to come up with some language here. I don't know if we necessarily, I mean, just before next week when you're meeting with council about this, you know, that is kind of reasonable. It's also, you know, yeah, this also, you know, relatively rushed nonetheless. But, you know, but yeah, we're, conceptually, you know, we need, we need to be thinking in terms, I think, of that no, no additional impact, you know, is not, is not adequate. You know, we're not, we're not doing the thing, whether it's, you know, with respect to equity or whether it's ecological justice, you know, just not creating new harms or minimizing the amount of pollution or whatever is not, you know, necessarily like aspirational goal language, you know what I mean? And, and it feels like when I look back at my notes, you know, from the con plan adoption process, you know, one of the things that really frequently stands out with me is that was one of those super actions. And one of the, you know, was like, I forget kind of what these super actions, how they were, they were classified in the process, but they didn't make that, they didn't make their way into any policy language, you know what I mean? So it's like, I can't go look at the con plan and say, oh, here's this, this super action. At least I don't think they did, none of the policy language at least. And so one of those super actions was that we would, we would strive to be a model. We were striving to be a leader, you know, with respect to the climate and, and environment, environmental policy. And so, you know, I don't want to, I, I don't, I, I look at some of this language and it is hardly aspirational language, you know, when you're talking about a 20 year plan. And particularly in the context of, you know, we, this, this whole policy setting is that we've been aspiring to be a leader and inspiring, aspiring to be a model for other cities, other small cities in, in terms of our climate and environmental policy and social policies for that matter. And so I'd like to see that reflected here. And, and I, when, when we say, when we have one climate friendly goal that has one policy that captures anything that you might want to do related to improving the, the state of, of the natural, you know, you know, the natural resources, you know, that's going along with the transportation project and not only checks one box on, on this list, you know, no matter how you stack it up. And then this was another thing that I want to get to is, you know, that there should kind of be tiers here, you know, and it's like, there's, there's kind of like a, a minimum effort, I'm just doing this check the box thing. And then there's a, I'm going above and beyond to do, to show how this city can be a model and how this city can be a leader in this space. And that should be two checks, you know what I mean? And that should be higher, an even higher priority than, you know, just, oh, I'm putting in, you know, a couple of street trees, you know, as part of this project and, and that checks this box, you know? And, and those should, those should be different, you know? If you're coming in, putting in a, you know, pollinator pathways in the medians and you're, you know, finding ways, you know, you know, with pedestrian trails to, you know, kind of keep people out of the, you know, out of the sun and away from the pavement and, and the shade. And you're, you're going to all these lengths to make your project better. That should be worth more than just putting in some street trees. And so I, I'd really like to see the policies reflect that. And I'd like to see, you know, when this is used as a way to prioritize projects, I'd love to see this really, I, I'd love to see projects that help Milwaukee be a leader and be a model city really rise to the top and shine through. And I, I want these policies to enable that outcome.
Chair Sherman?
I would support kind of a new goal as kind of Commissioner Edge has kind of, I'd say broadly shaped it out. I could see benefit again in having a more focused goal that could help us think through some of the, some, some things like I could, you know, if we had a, a goal or some policies in place like this, you know, maybe things like Kellam Creek Dam removal would have happened a while ago. Or maybe, again, maybe more street trees could be happening. And so, yeah, I, I think, you know, broadly I'd be in support of that.
Commissioner Feumir?
Me too. I, I'm in support of that. I was thinking even in the wording for the word climate friendly as a goal, just being friendly, and I was thinking what about what the language that you're using, Commissioner Edge about climate justice? And then just going through that, that lens of what are, what are the languages that we're using as goals? As you mentioned before with the parking and what are the actual goals? What actually is what we want as you were talking through it? I made me rethink more about what this table or what the, the goal of this table is, which it should be a language more appropriate for like what that is. And I, I do feel like breaking down that climate, what I would prefer probably would be climate justice and then ecological justice, kind of break it down. And it might make it more also achievable when you break it into what are the, the specifics that you want for each one of those two? So each one can focus on what they're, they're related, but they may not be fully related. I don't know if that makes sense.
I'm sorry, I was going to jump in real quick. So I, I, I'm truly in favor of like highlighting a lot of those issues that Commissioner Edge had highlighted and, you know, kind of confirmed by the other commissioners. I just, in my mind, I'm just wondering like with the more goals we put in, like how does that work logistically when we're working on projects? If we have 100 goals, you know, how do, you know, how do we prioritize which goals? So I'm trying to, I'm just wondering like, you know, I just, some of the projects are like, well, we're working on this goal right now, but, you know, we're not going to hit that goal until five years. So I'm just, you know, I, I want to highlight that stuff. I think that those issues are important. But I just wonder as we, you know, how many goals is, how many goals are actionable? And like if, if we have too many goals, you know, is it just going to fall off just because of timing, because we have too many items on our list?
Well, and if I could just jump in there, I think one of the challenges, and we see this with the comprehensive plan and big long range plans, is that there's a lot of goals without an actual way to implement a lot of things and they don't translate into actions that are actually going to happen with the funding that we have available. Not to say that we shouldn't be trying to do those things, but we have very little money here in Milwaukee. We can barely get our sidewalks built and get our neighborhood greenways built. And so I think that it's a challenge to kind of know how, it, it sets up, and, and I don't mean to, I don't mean to be discouraging to say that we shouldn't be doing these things and setting these goals, but I also don't want there to be some kind of a, a false, a false assurance to people that we are going to be able to do some of the things like, Commissioner Edge, you pointed out, talking about pollinator and medians. I'm just not sure that that's something that the city would ever be able to fund. And so I'm just, I, I guess I'm just trying to understand how, how these will translate into meaningful prioritizations of projects. And so that's what it really comes down to, down to it. And I think to your point, Vice Chair Freeman, is that how are these actionable? And are they actionable within a timeframe that the city would be able to accomplish? And so we're kind of trying to come at it at a high level so that we have flexibility when we are looking at projects. But also if some project is really highly ranking in safety, safety is probably always going to be your number one, like it's safety, those are the projects this city is going to do first. That's just probably how it's been for a long time and we, with the limited funds that we have available. So yes, adding a lot of goals that I'm not sure will reach within the timeframe of six years or that any of our projects will actually reach in the timeline of six years because we're supposed to update the transportation system plan in another six years. I do understand though, Commissioner Edge, the idea of wanting to be a leader and a model. And we want to be able to do that, but we're probably only going to have very few projects that actually live up to those aspirations.
And I'll just quickly jump in and add that I think from a scoring perspective, and we haven't necessarily discussed in great detail, how exactly we will be scoring the projects. This group of goals and policies will be used in that scoring. But I think one of the challenges is that you get more specific, like on, does the project add street trees? Or are there, I, I, I don't know that at the TSP level that those projects, that, that level of detail necessarily would be included in the project. And so adding, I think, specific, yeah, I guess policies related to that. I don't, yeah, I don't know that that would be sort of included in the scoring process at, at the TSP level. And then the other thing, but I would note, Commissioner Edge, to your point that climate friendly does not necessarily, you know, is not the same as a healthy environment. When I did go through the, you know, the process of looking at all the plans, I, we did initially have, when we started this process, a, a healthy environment goal that was separate from a climate friendly goal. And as I say, recognizing the distinction I think that you're drawing, and this has just been an example of, you know, taking all of these through multiple groups, multiple processes and sort of trying to, I think, you know, get more specific at times and then elaborate in other areas on other goals and other instances. It's just, we, we kind of lost the thread on, I think, some of those initial goals. But yeah, noted that, yeah, there's a distinction to be made there and I think that that's something that we'll, we should, we should look at.
Yeah, could I add something real quick on that? I think, so I, yeah, I can see the case either way. I'm kind of drawn to the idea of adding two goals. And I think in my head, when we think climate friendly, there's like two aspects of that. And from what I've seen sort of broadly in that space, I think there's two ways to think about it. One is obviously the idea of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, right? And I actually think that that's a good goal, but like on some level beyond the scope of what a city like Milwaukee is going to do, right? We're not going to have an electric vehicle rebate program in Milwaukee. That's not to say there's nothing we can do around that, but I think that's a little further upstream than, than what the city can do. But then the other piece of that I think is climate adaptation and thinking about infrastructure and what that looks like in a changing climate. And I do think that that's where a city can have a much different role. And I know we have the resiliency piece on here, but that reads to me, and we can maybe talk about this when we get there, but that reads to me as a lot more focused around kind of these disaster, kind of like, you know, outlier scenarios and less around the day to day of someone walking through a bunch of blacktop in the heat when it's 95 degrees out and when those days are becoming a lot more consistent. And so I wonder if there's a framing there. And I also think from the limited amount I understand about funding projects and grants that are available, I think that's a framing that might align well with potential funders or with potential projects that might be out there as far as thinking about these kind of two aspects of what a change in climate means. Like from one perspective, climate mitigation and from the other perspective, like climate adaptation, actually adapting to the, the damage that's already been done, so to speak. And so I wonder, and potentially, I know this isn't necessarily directing or directly impacting kind of the question of nature and of environmental justice as much. But I wonder if there's a way to frame it in that sense? Because I think when we talk about climate friendly, it becomes this broad umbrella of those specific things. But I think those are two very distinct categories that projects could fall under. And I think the ways they're funded and the people that are implementing and working on those projects are actually quite a bit different. And so I don't know if that's a helpful framing or if other commissioners have thoughts about maybe approaching it from that perspective, but that's what comes to mind for me. And then I actually have one question of, to the extent you remember from conversations, so climate change was struck out as one of the specific words in the goal. And I'm just curious if you remember the conversation at all that led to that? Or if there was any, I would just be curious to know what that looks like? Because it seems like, yeah, I'm just curious.
I don't, I don't know the specific, I don't know if you do Laura, but I, I'm guessing that it was, and this is, I guess, sort of related to the conversation about having a sort of ecological justice separate goal. But I'm, I'm guessing that we tried to refine the goal statement to be sort of inclusive of all types of pollution, climate pollution, but also pollution to our waterways or, you know, local air quality.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, it was not, yeah, I think there was no other motivation.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Chair Edge?
You promoted me.
Yeah, that too.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So then my, I mean, yeah, so, you know, you, you're all basically hearing me right, you know? And, and so, you know, I don't need to elaborate any further, it doesn't count, Mike, but. it doesn't count, Mike, but, um, you know, I, I appreciate that we're a smaller city with a smaller budget. We're not gonna do, you know, big projects, but, um, but, you know, it does kind of get into my questions of, um, you know, how, how are these being, how are these being used to prioritize things? Um, what, what do we know about projects at the time that we are using the methodology for scoring them? And, um, you know, because again, we're, we're, we're using this, as I understand it, to move from the, um, the big wish list of everything that we need, um, to the financially constrained list. And so, um, you know, what, what do we, what do we know about projects, uh, you know, so that we can reasonably design policies around, um, helping those projects be scored, uh, you know, and prioritize and, you know, um, you know, in, in a way that's, you know, consistent with, you know, the, the city's policies. I mean, I'd like to, I'd like this to be less of a black box and, you know, to better understand, you know, exactly, you know, kind of these details of how, of, you know, how, how these are going to be used. And we talked about this a little bit before, and I think we've kind of kept it a little, a little more abstract, but I, I want to, you know, kind of know more about the specifics of, you know, how, how the scoring occurs, um, you know, when, when we're looking at the projects and what we know about those projects at the time of scoring, because that's gonna make a big difference. I mean, I think, um, you know, I've gone through and looked at some project descriptions for transportation projects in other jurisdictions over the last few weeks, as, you know, I've kind of been, you know, preparing or, you know, thinking about this. And, um, you know, and there's, sometimes there is language around, you know, the, the stormwater improvements or, you know, the ecological improvements or restoration efforts that are associated with a particular project. So, um, you know, when, when do we know that that's something that we want to fold into a project to make it more, um, competitive for grant funding, for instance? You know, I, I mean, I just, there's, there's different, different ways to get money and different pots of money and different priorities, depending on what that pot of money is and who's supplying it. And so, um, you know, there's, there are ways that we can kind of dress up a project and make it a little bit more, you know, um, you know, add more, uh, more elements that, um, align with our, you know, ecological justice or equity or climate justice. And depending on who, who the, um, who's funding it, you know, that the project might score better, you know, if we added these elements or, or, or didn't include some of these elements, depending on the circumstances. So I, I'd like to understand this in greater detail so that, you know, we can understand how our language is actually being used and, and how it applies, because this really makes a difference in, you know, I think what we're, what we sign off on here.
I think that's a really good point, Commissioner Edge, because as, as I understand it, and I, we will talk about this internally, um, with the engineering staff and with our consultant, because I think from the way that I understand it is that the projects that we'll have, won't have a certain level of specificity in them. They will be much higher level projects, and that's how they'll get sorted. And so I don't think that we'll know, um, because there's always this idea of like, what are the constraints around each project and how much money are we gonna have? And then setting this expectation that there's gonna be more that you're gonna get from the project than you're actually gonna get from the project, um, when it comes down to, when you have, how much money do we have to use to build this particular project? Um, so it's like this tricky, I understand exactly what your question is, and I'm not sure there's a perfect answer, but I'm glad that you're bringing it up. And I think that it's worth further discussion internally to think through that a little bit and try to get you a little bit of a better answer, although I, I, I'm not sure there's going to be a perfect answer, because it seems like when you're going after grant funding, that you would incorporate a lot of things into, um, certain projects. Um, and you're right, it would give you access to different pots of money. And, um, that would all have to be part of the design of the project. And so anyway, it's complicated, right? I, yeah, there's not a great answer, but let us, let, let us noodle on a little bit more and see if we can get a little bit better answer for you.
Thank you. And then the last thing I want to throw out, and then I will be done with this goal, is that, um, again, referring back to that super action, wanting to be a leader, you know, and trying to be a model city, um, I think that our language on, um, climate, uh, goal policy number four is a little soft to be considered a leader, um, or a model. Um, you know, I don't think that we should be exploring establishing targets. I think that we've already set a policy for ourselves to establish targets. And, um, you know, we're, we're, we're in the implementation phase of, of, you know, of that plan and, and, you know, exploring doesn't really meet muster, in my opinion, at this point.
Uh, okay, uh, my last comment on this section, because I think we need to move on. We have quite a few more goals to get through. So, uh, Chair Sherman, if you wanna give a final thought on this goal?
Thanks, Vice Chair. Yeah, I think I would agree with, um, Commissioner Edge on that last point about explore establishing targets. I think we, um, should say, let's establish targets on mode, on mode splits if the real conversation is more with staff about how to use those targets. Like, let's have that conversation. But like, I think, uh, I agree with Commissioner Edge. And I think just to go back on, um, kind of broader goal framing, I really like what Commissioner Mulholland was suggesting of, like, maybe this really is about climate mitigation. Maybe, and when we get to resiliency, we can talk about resiliency and adaptation. And then maybe as Commissioner Edge was talking about separately, maybe there is some ecological justice or restorative function or something, something there. But I think that setting a benchmark out for staff to strive towards as they're coming up with projects, to think about that ecological restoration, I think is gonna, it's gonna get us the, the comp plan goals and visions that we've articulated as a community. Um, so, um, and I'll put a period there. Thanks, Vice Chair.
Okay, great. Thank you. That is a lot to chew on, y'all. Give us some, give us some hard work to do. Okay, fabulous. Transit Forward, what have you got?
Can I just, uh, really quick, maybe this is good to ask at the start. It's mostly procedural. I don't fully understand, um, the, the role, our relationship with TRIMET necessarily. And so I, I like that its phrase is like work with, because recognizing that we don't actually have a lot of control to do much in this space. Could I get just like a very brief overview of how that actually happens? Like what that actually looks like when we're, um, working with transit agencies to identify and eliminate existing transit deficiencies? Can I just like, what's, what's the venue for that, I guess?
You know, we have, um, TRIMET on our technical committee. So TRIMET's been sitting in and listening to all of these conversations. And I think it kind of happens, and I'm not the TRIMET expert, um, here, but I do think that when they are getting ready to do their plans, their enhancement plans, they have a lot of planning things that go on. They always do reach out to us and ask us, what are you all missing? What do we think that needs to be included? What do you think needs more frequent transit? Whether or not that makes the cut is not up to us, but we are in a kind of a dialogue with them on a regular basis. Like, we've got a project with them right now. It's called Better Bus, and they just want us to, they're looking at efficiencies of flow of transit. And so we're meeting with them to, to tell them what we know. So it's kind of a, it's a, it's a, it's a relationship that has a lot of back and forth, I think. Yeah.
And so, and so these policies would frame how we approach?
Yes.
Those up to, okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, that's correct.
Chair Sherman?
Right. Um, not, I'd say a lot of substantive feedback on this. I think my, the big one, um, that really comes to mind is, I think we have this, a lot of this framed around connection between, like, where people live and where they want, and like, between transit and where people live. I think we need to make it a little bit more broad. And one thing that, I haven't done a word search on this, but, um, I don't think we use the word jobs in this at all. And I know transit connections to jobs is huge. Um, a good friend of mine, um, owns a company just on the, uh, other side of Milwaukee City Limits, and getting transit connections for his employees is, is a major issue and barrier. Um, and I imagine that's probably similar for a lot of Milwaukee employers, like in the North Milwaukee Industrial Area, around, around Bob's off of 224, like better, better transit connections to jobs. I think it was really important. So I just wanted to kind of flag that as some kind of general feedback. And then maybe, uh, back in the, what do we call things, uh, space, you know, I, uh, maybe suggest we just simplify the goal and call it like public transit. Um, Transit Forward is like TRIMET's newest transit planning activity right now, but it's not gonna be what it's always called for the next 20 years. And so maybe we just, you know, choose something that's kind of more simply says what we're talking about. That's it. Thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Edge?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, yeah, I don't have a whole lot here. Um, one of the things I'm surprised to not see anything about is, um, that there is a high capacities transit route that is, um, you know, in the regional transportation plan. Um, you know, it's adopted by Metro, that goes, um, through Milwaukee. Currently, it's, um, routed along Highway 224, which seems stupid and, um, not helpful to most people. So, um, I mean, if you're thinking about, uh, you know, where stations would be located along the expressway, um, th- those are not, uh, a lot of those are not really destination areas, um, you know, or, or where there's a lot of people living, or even where there's a lot of opportunity for, um, I think a lot of, you know, additional housing. So, um, I'm surprised that we don't have something in here to try to align the regional, um, transportation plans, high capacity transit route through the city along a corridor that would be more useful for the city. Um, I think that's an important thing. Um, and I don't see any reference to the ACC plan in here at all, um, that the, you know, that Metro's adopted. Um, and then, I guess the other thing that's, I guess I see it here, you know, on number five, um, you know, which is, you know, newer than, you know, one of the, the earlier drafts that I've been, I've been working with. But, um, this one, uh, you know, coordinated with TRIMET to improve the safety, accessibility and making transit stops in the city. Um, I, I'd like to see more improvements to the stops themselves as well. Um, like, maybe we need more shelters or, you know, I mean, it's not, not necess, I mean, I, I agree, we need accessibility. We need, we, we need ADA rights, you know, and we need sidewalks where the bus stops are. We need, you know, we need crosswalks. We need, you know, I mean, obviously accessibility is a thing, but we need amenities at the stations themselves. And, um, I think that particularly along the frequent transit routes, uh, in the city, of which there are, you know, a few now, I think that, um, you know, at least planned, the Olinlandwood as well, I, I think that we should be looking at, um, you know, uh, enhanced, um, bus, bus stations. And we talked about this a little bit with the plan development review at, um, Hillside Manor. And, um, we ended up, uh, uh, so, you know, and, and, and I'd like, I'm bringing this back up because I think that this needs to be thought about at a policy level and not necessarily at an application, you know, level, you know, at an individual site application level. But, um, there were, on Hillside Development, there were two stops on 32nd Avenue and, um, to start with. And I think those two stops are, are still there today, um, because the development hasn't really, you know, gone in earnest yet there. Um, but we, we sent it back to them, you know, after that initial, you know, um, hearing, or that initial hearing, and then the preliminary review. And then when they came back with the final review, they consolidated, talked TRIMET, they consolidated the two stops into one stop, um, that would have more, you know, amenities. And, um, you know, would be a, you know, was located at a more prominent, uh, intersection, you know, with respect to that particular development, um, you know, right in the center of their, you know, pedestrian plaza that they had set up rather than being out of the extremities of this, of the site. And so that was, that was a good improvement. And, um, I just, I think that we should be, I wanted to explore kind of a, a policy level for, you know, improving, you know, stations and, you know, station design, station location, um, and not just treat that on an application by application, you know, ad hoc basis.
Uh, Chair Sherman?
Sorry, Vice Chair, I said I was done. And as soon as I got off, I, um, thought about it. Um, so not really anything, much to what Commissioner Edge was saying, so apologies on that. But, you know, as some, I ride, uh, transit several times a week. Um, one thing that's not on here, and hopefully the future is different than the present, but I think, um, I know, safe, safety is mentioned around in five, around improve the safety of transit stops in the city, but I also think improving safety on transit, um, and desirability of transit. Um, you know, again, hopefully the, the future continues to kind of head in the direction that it is, but I, I know a number of people have developed kind of, um, poor sentiments towards, uh, towards transit in the last few years, given just some of the broader challenges we've been dealing with as a community. And so, you know, um, you know, advocating or supporting, uh, TRIMET in, in kind of improving the desirability and the safety of transit in and of itself, as opposed to just the stops, I think would be another thing that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. We've got a long way to go. All right, moving along. Um, mobility, accessibility and connectivity. Oh, you don't have any comments. That's amazing. It's perfect. Okay, on to the next. No, I'm joking.
I, I see we've words missed, uh, policy number two here.
Yeah, and the idea behind, that was very specific to have the focus be on, um, Milwaukee and then outside of Milwaukee. That was based on comments that we got from the advisory committee.
Yeah, and I, I just want to make sure that we're not sacrificing, you know, I mean, I, I see the word balance there, but, uh, you know, uh, sacrificing our priorities or our needs as a community, um, to accommodate, uh, sacrificing our desires to move as many vehicles as possible past a given point on a roadway, um, the, the, this does not a good fit for our community. We, we need to prioritize, you know, how our transportation system works for our, you know, residents and businesses. And some of that is through movement, but, um, you know, we shouldn't be, I'm just, I know we're words missing. It can be, words miss this already, but I'm, I'm still a little uneasy with, um, with balance there. I think we need to prioritize our local connectivity and safety needs, uh, while accommodating regional mobility.
That was a word that I can use directly. I got it.
Uh, Chair Sherman?
Um, yeah, thanks. I, I think, um, somewhat related to what Commissioner Edge is bringing up there, you know, number five, um, one thing I was thinking about on number five, and, and I, I feel like the language shows up somewhere else in the document about this barrier effect. One thing that's not called out here is the railroad. I, you know, and 224 and the railroad often parallel one another, but they don't entirely. And I think they are different barriers, um, and, and we should call out, um, the railroad kind of specifically. Um, I think maybe circling back to a little bit of what Commissioner Edge was talking about, and I was gonna kind of bring it up in, in safety, and so happy to kind of take it back there if you want, if we want to put a pin in it. But, you know, especially, and it, and it ties to number five. So, uh, but thinking about opportunities we have at the TSP to try and slow traffic, um, down on McLaughlin, um, in order to help people get across the street, um, whether that be through, uh, things like, uh, speed cameras or red light cameras. You know, I, I just, I wanna, I wanna make sure that we're, we kind of have enough here to be able to have, have some of those conversations. So that's, again, happy to talk- So that's, again, happy to talk about that more in safety if that's something that we want to do. And then on number eight, minimize cut through traffic on local streets. I would also suggest we say something about, and I guess it gets to safety as well, just about reducing speed limits as well. Minimize cut through traffic and reduce speed limits on local streets.
Thank you, Chair Sherman. Commissioner Moher, I can't see you, so if you have any comments, just kind of jump in there.
Thanks. Yeah, I was actually just going to add on that last point. I would maybe just say reduce speeds instead of speed limits as well. I mean, I'm for reducing speed limits, but I also think that like that might not always have the impact of reducing speeds. So I think if we're prioritizing what people are actually doing, that might be more valuable.
Great. And then I would just say, just for the commissioners, if we have potential language for staff, I think that's, would be helpful for them to go ahead and provide that. Chair Sherman, do you have additional comments or your hand's still up?
All right, going once, going twice. We're going to move on to active, healthy transportation choices. I'm seeing no changes. We can circle back if anybody, oh.
Oh, oh, going, going, gone. I, um, I guess on, on seven, prioritize the complete connected. And I'm, and when we say greenway, I'm assuming we mean neighborhood greenway. And so we might want to just include the word neighborhood there unless, unless we're talking about some other kind of greenway network. And it's probably, maybe it's not as relevant here. Maybe it is, because I feel like this list is more about project selection than about other TSP policies. But I think as some planning staff know, I have found myself very engaged in a community conversation around prioritizing neighborhood greenways in Milwaukee and trying to get them actually prioritized over other local service streets. And it doesn't appear that, that they are being prioritized from an operational city engineering perspective. And so I think that, you know, if this list that we're talking about is about project selection and not about other city policy, maybe Laura, you could kind of make that clear. But in the other city policy, I would really like to have a conversation that, where we say, you know, full stop, neighborhood, streets designated as neighborhood greenways are more special than the lower classification streets they're intersecting with. And I think that probably goes in that other, not on this list.
So I think that you're saying, you want to, you want to be sure that we're prioritizing that. And do you feel that this is not getting at that? If we don't, if we add the word neighborhood greenway, does that start to, to get at that?
Well, yeah, I think the neighborhood greenway is just, it makes it, because like that's what we're talking about, right?
Yes.
So I think like, let's just add in the word neighborhood, because we call them neighborhood greenways. But, so, yeah, but I guess my question is, is like, let me, or let me reframe my question of, like, are we coming up with other TSP policies? Or is like, is this the list and this is it?
Well, the idea is that if, if you have a new policy that you want us to include, that we should talk about that policy. I mean, I think that's what we're doing, right? We're changing around some of the policies already. So if there's something that you want to add, we can discuss it. But yeah, this would be it. Like, this is, this is that, I mean, not the final moment, but this is that moment.
Yeah. Okay. I'll, I'll, let me do a little thinking while we're, while maybe Commissioner Edge chimes in. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Edge, please.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Yeah, so I think that, well, we use the term greenway network. What we're really trying to get to is, you know, low stress transportation. And so I don't know if that's the term that we want to throw in there or maybe we say neighborhood greenway and, you know, refers back to a definition somewhere in a glossary somewhere that, you know, includes the term low stress. We're really looking for a low stress transportation network, complete low stress transportation network. The policy is that, so, and Chair Sherman brings up a point that, you know, I wanted to get into as well, but when you're looking at how you're prioritizing projects or, you know, the financially constrained list, it doesn't necessarily make sense to say there are policies to have different classifications of bikeways instead of just, you know, one classification of bikeway or different classifications of, you know, pedestrian routes or, you know, like we have different classifications for, you know, a motor vehicle, you know, streets. And so, you know, it might, I think it would make sense to have additional classifications. And so there might be a bicycle arterial classification. And, and that probably deserves, you know, a protected, you know, physically protected space for bicyclists in, along a commercial corridor. You know what I mean? That, that would be, you know, a bikeway arterial. A neighborhood greenway or, you know, a low stress bikeway or whatever you want to call it would still be higher than a local service street that, you know, doesn't have a, you know, specific bikeway designation. And that would create these opportunities for, you know, using signage, you know, or, or traffic control devices or whatever to make sure that traffic flows were prioritized on the neighborhood greenway instead of, you know, the neighborhood greenway competing with local service streets or, you know, right of way against motor vehicles or whatever that, so. You know, the having, I don't know that this is, I don't know that these priorities are the right, are the right place to, to throw that stuff in there. And maybe, maybe it's not policies that we're talking about. Maybe we're just talking about the livable streets, you know, part of the process or, you know, the TSP, you know, development. And, and then we'll talk then, you know, I know Laura's told me a few times, I need to hold my horses and wait for the livable streets discussion. And so I think that that, that might be what we're waiting for, to have talks about, about that. But it just, it feels like policy language to me. And it feels, and I want to have policies around, you know, when you have a bikeway on a, on a, you know, a street that exceeds a certain traffic count, you know, that you need to have physical protection, you know, of, of the bikeway on, on that street or you need to reduce the speed limit, one or the other, you know. And so there's these kind of prescriptive policy elements that I don't know belong here. And so that's, that's where, you know, the last time we were talking about this and I made a big deal about wanting to have a discussion around, you know, all kinds of policies around modal elements of the plan and everything. It's for this kind of thing, but I don't, I don't know that we're going to get into that level of detail, Laura. You know, with, with the policies and maybe you can help elaborate on that a little bit so, you know, we know where to spend our energy. But, you know, yeah, for sure, you know, multiple classifications for different modal types or modal elements of the network. And then, you know, kind of these more prescriptive, like what treatment from our toolkit do we need to use under certain circumstances? That's the thing that, you know, are these policies going to get into that? Or is that something that's just kind of left up to the engineering discretion during project design?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, we've talked about this a little bit before. And I think that it's a, a good point. I do think that the livable streets analysis will help. We're getting ready to talk about that with the Technical Committee and the Advisory Committee on Thursday night. So Commissioner Edge, you'll be in that conversation. So that's kind of like, you'll kind of know what we're getting at. I do think, and you'll see, there's different cross directions with different streets, depending on what the street looks like, how much right of way we have, what is the, is there a sidewalk or is there parking on one side? So we have a bunch of different cross sections. And I think the idea has always, has been and will continue to be that there needs to be some flexibility when you design the streets, right? So to the point where you have a toolbox of like, here, here's what we might use and here's what it would be if we had an ideal situation, but we're not always going to have an ideal situation. And so there are these toolboxes that the engineers do use when designing projects. Because to your point, I would say, like, there's not always going to be enough room to build a protected bike lane. Just there's not going to be enough room in certain cross sections to do that. We don't have a whole lot of right of way. I mean, we have so few, I mean, the classic, the functional classification of the streets, when you look at that, you can really start to get an understanding of like, we just have very few collectors and we know exactly what kind of right of way we have on our roads right now. There's, it's not, we don't have a big roadway system. And so we feel like in the livable streets, the engineer is working with the consultant has kind of looked at, well, what is here in Milwaukee? And if we had an idealized situation, here's what a cross street might look like. But ultimately, the design and the funding and all those other things play into what the design actually looks like. If you, but if you have a standard that you're shooting for, that's good, but you're not always going to reach that standard. So I think we're going to have the conversation about the livable streets. And then there's also this whole performance measures part of the plan that we are now required to do when we are analyzing our projects. And we have to pick performance measures for each, like, how are we measuring the impacts, the effects of these policies on certain projects? And so one of the, there's a whole list and it's a super technical, but I encourage anyone that wants to learn more about this to go to the TSP, the TSP page. And you can look at the meeting materials that have been posted for this. We're going to come to you all and talk about it. But it gives kind of an explanation of how the performance measures are going to work. And so say, we get to choose, we have to choose, required to choose two performance measures that we're going to measure projects against. And one of them that we're looking at is connectivity, right? So does the project increase connectivity in our system? Then that means that that project will get scored higher. There's other, there's other measures. They're a little bit more difficult because one of the measures say is level of stress. And one of the, one of the issues with doing, having that be a performance measure is say you want a level of stress for bicycles. Well, when you're doing one project, the, you're only kind of impacting one segment. So the level of stress might go down on one block where there's one project, but that doesn't make the level of stress any less, lower on another project, on another block, right? So it's kind of balancing thing. I don't mean to jump, I don't mean to jump into this really technical analysis that Commissioner Edge, I know that you're, you've been wanting to do. But that's just kind of a preview as that conversation is coming. And then I'm hoping that that's where we'll focus kind of on the specific ideas, but that aren't completely specific, that are part of a toolbox without a lot of specificity in a roundabout way.
Hope you're muted.
Commissioner, if you're mayor, and then Chair Sherman, you can jump in after that.
Okay. I had one comment and you're, the number one, when it says provide and maintain, can also be improved since you're maintaining. But like if there's anything that it could be, be adding room to not just keeping it as it is, but like maybe a room for improvement to those walking, biking, bowling axes and all that. I don't know, I wanted to ask that. One technical.
No, that's a, that's a, that's a good point. There isn't that, that word in there because it's just saying create them and they maintain them, but it's not saying improve what you've got. So that could be language that could be added, I believe. Yeah. Thank you.
Great. So maybe what I'm suggesting on seven is something like, expand a complete connected network of low stress streets for pedestrians, cyclists and rollers that prioritizes vulnerable system users over automobiles. So that's maybe some, and I can drop that in the chat. I think though, another thing, and again, this is maybe where I go back to like, this feels more like a policy list for choosing capital projects than like broader transportation policy for maybe how projects are designed. But I think to what Commissioner, Laura, what you were talking about with Commissioner Edge, you know, another thing could also be establish functional classifications for neighborhood greenways that prioritize greenways over other functional classifications. Again, that doesn't feel like it would be the kind of thing you put into a checklist for how projects get scored. But that feels like a policy we need to establish, or I would encourage us to establish somewhere. And that becomes kind of overarching city policy for which the work then gets done according to. So again, I don't know if it goes in this list or goes somewhere else, but, or maybe goes as part of this great livable streets analysis, but want to just suggest that too.
Okay, could you do me a favor and repeat that?
Yeah, I also just dropped it in the chat.
Okay, cool. Okay, perfect.
The first was establish or expand a complete connected network of low stress streets for pedestrians, cyclists and rollers that prioritizes vulnerable system users over automobiles. And then the other is establish functional classifications for neighborhood greenways that prioritize greenways over other functional classifications.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. All righty, I think we're moving on to the third page. Okay. Got coordination with local, regional and state partners. I will say this wasn't a big hot topic in any of the conversations we've had in any of the other groups, but who knows, the Planning Commission might find this a hot topic. And here comes Commissioner Edge.
Commissioner Edge, come on down.
Yeah, so just in, in, I obviously, you know, regional coordination, you know, it's just something where we, we need to do. And so I found this whole goal a little awkward, but yeah, since we have it, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, losing sight of, you know, the, the state and regional, you know, work that's gone into, you know, wildlife and habitat connectivity or, you know, habitat connectivity and wildlife movement. Sorry. And, you know, that's still a work in progress, you know, with the Regional Connectivity Working Group. But they are meeting again and moving forward, you know, or, you know, anyway, that's, so that's the thing that, you know, just I kind of see as, you know, missing in, in my eyes from policies. You know, this is where kind of feels to me like the Endangered Species Act, you know, stuff that I've been talking before about, does this go under climate, climate goal policy number three like everything else? But, you know, really it feels like that's a coordination with federal law, you know, under, under that point. I have a note here that says, why is this a box that gets checked off? Because we have, we have to do the coordination, right? Anyway, but then I just had some references to things like, you know, the Oregon Conservation Strategy, but also like the Metro Spring Process, Spring Processing Guidebook. You know, and just making sure that we have appropriate references in our transportation standards, you know, to, you know, refer to, again, Metro Spring Processing Guidebook for best practices for spring crossings. And, you know, there was an application back in 2017 where a bridge over, over Menthorne Creek, you know, went in on private property to connect two pieces of a site, you know, that were separated by the creek. And they wanted to have storage building on both sides of the creek. So, you know, but just making sure that the, the standards that would apply in that situation refer back to these best practices so that we don't just have so that, um, we don't just have some, we don't have someone being able to get away with a, a string crossing that doesn't provide enough room for, um, you know, wildlife movement underneath, you know, for instance. That was a kind of the point of that particular, um, you know, discussion with that applicant, you know, back then. Um, and then, you know, voluntarily did the right thing there, but it'd be nice to have that the standards, um, hold future applicants to, um, you know, implementing best practice. Then this is kind of in the same, I mean, maybe this needs to wait. But, um, there's two things about the, um, the ODOT, ODOT facilities and the railroad facility, you know, that, um, that I have questions about. And so, um, 224, um, my understanding is that even though there's not projects for it yet, that the, the general vision from ODOT is to, um, access control, uh, all intersections and so have, you know, great separated intersections for 224. Um, so interchanges instead of, um, intersections with signals. And then also, um, the fact that the, um, the state has received federal approval for, um, their passenger rail plan, which involves double tracking the U K mainline, um, all the way through the city. And so that's an additional 30 feet of right of way from the railroad that needs to be accounted for. And, um, I'm just wondering, you know, is this on our radar? When do we talk about this? You know, I don't know that we need policies around that. Again, I don't know that we need a goal for this anyway. But, um, you know, yeah, I'm just, I'm just kind of wondering about those things and when those come up in discussion.
Um, I think to your point, yes, we do all these things already. It's one of those things that we're kind of required to do is acknowledging that we're going to coordinate, I think, um, so that's why these goals and policies are here. I think you'll see them in all T S P goals and policies plans in state forekind probably, just so you know. Um, and I would say that if there's some sort of policy statement that we do want to make um, about 224 and the railroad and passenger rail, this would be the place to do it.
Because ultimately, when we're talking about the passenger rail plan, we're talking about higher speed rail and ODOT, and ODOT wants those crossings all to be great separated as well. That has major implications, um, at Harrison and 32nd, for instance. Um, you know, we talked about that quite a bit when we were talking about, um, you know, the Central Milwaukee Bike Way, uh, route that ended up getting, uh, approved or whatever, um, recommended.
Well, the table that by city council still hasn't actually been approved, which might be an issue for upcoming, uh, projects that are being discussed.
Yeah, there is, um, one going through pre-application conference that could, or recently that could set the, um, end up setting that route for us, I guess.
Well, and we're working with them to figure out what's the best route is through that since we don't have an approved, but we do have it in many planning documents. So we can ask for that. So just to clarify on that side.
Um, so, you know, yeah, it's like, um, you know, when we're, when we're talking, uh, you know, about gray separating crossings, we've got to look at, um, you know, railroad harmony linwood, um, and we've got to talk about that. We've got to talk about, um, you know, 30, uh, Harrison and, and, and what that would do to 32nd Harrison and how the bus circulation would go. You know, now that, you know, if we have to, if we can't, um, get to Harrison from 32nd because of the grade, you know, to get over, you know, the railroad tracks and probably the highway at that point. Then, you know, so I mean, these are, these are kind of a big, big ticket things to be talking about and be worried about if some of these, um, larger plans, you know, are, are actually going to get funded and done. Um, you know, particularly higher speed passenger rail through the city. So, um, yeah, I, I think we need to think about it. I don't know that I have policy language other than, you know, we want to support it because passenger rail is kind of, you know, fits in to the mold. Even if it doesn't have a station here, regional, uh, interstate passenger rail, you know, it has a, is part of a climate strategy. And so, you know, it's certainly appropriate, um, for us to support it, even if we don't have a station. But, um, I don't, I don't know what our policy language would be here.
Okay, um, I think I would have to, I don't fully, I don't know enough about those two different things to, you know, craft policy language around that. And I don't know, I mean, I think actually now that I'm thinking through this and whether or not it would be a policy, I mean, maybe, let me think about that a little bit and whether or not this is the appropriate time to be having those conversations because I don't know the, that's a whole policy conversation, obviously, that the, the city council would be having as well and what they would be supportive of. So let me flag that as something to give a noodle on a little bit and, and come back with a response to you on that.
Chair Sherman.
Great, um, thanks, Vice Chair. I was actually originally raised my hand to just say back on the active, healthy transportation. Maybe we can also include the explore and utilize grants language in, in, in that goal as well. Um, I think to one of my, just my earliest comments about, um, seems like there are multiple buckets where that might be able to go. I do think as Commissioner Edge was saying, trying to get a little bit clearer about coordination with ODOT, again, on 22499E. Um, I know we have kind of the overarching policy about advocating for city priorities. But, you know, I think if there's specific things, um, 22499E, you know, and I just, I continue to think about safety and those, and safe crossings. And, um, you know, when I've walked across both of those, um, those facilities as well as ridden my bike across those facilities with my children, those, those places are stressful. And same thing for the railroad as well. And, you know, I think about the nice, or I'll say nice, I'll put it in quotes, the nice crossing that we have at the, um, at the Max Crossing on Harrison relative to the, um, the railroad crossing, you know? Maybe there's an opportunity to get some nicer gates up and other things like that. And so I, I think, um, again, maybe specifically honing in on those like connectivity, safety issues with ODOT and the railroad, um, would be great. Frankly, it also, I feel like the railroad did some maintenance on the train tracks this year and really messed up getting the asphalt level to our infrastructure and would like to have seen that, um, done kind of, um, better. But, um, I think as Commissioner Edge was saying about, um, larger rail planning, you know, I think trying to get smarter on that for us would be, would be really helpful.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Pio Mayor.
Yes, um, when I was reading the number one, um, I kept thinking also that another language that could be added in there, not only coordinating, but during the mitigation processes, advocating for city process. I don't, I don't know what the language will be, but I, you know, many of those projects come with consequences during that mitigation that the city can find specific things that can help this, the city itself. Like during those, especially federal projects, right? You get a lot of processes that happen with section 106 and other things like that, that, that have, um, the city can benefit from those mitigation processes. So I don't know how to, where that word can be put it, but I think it probably while coordinating and mitigating something there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Maybe just back on railroad real fast. Um, I do think some of my colleagues, City of Portland are ha- um, having some conversations and study and, uh, study, maybe getting ready to be done about, um, crossing eliminations. And so, you know, there could be an opportunity to also coordinate, just some of those conversations or some of that research, just whatever that might be worth.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move into the resiliency bucket. I don't know, this is a dangerous bucket here, resiliency.
Yeah, maybe I'll expand on what I said before. So I think if, if we did, um, create one that was specific to climate adaptation, I would say in this bucket, we could change resiliency to emergency preparedness. We could keep, um, one and three in that bucket. And then we could move two to the new bucket, which would be specifically around climate adaptation. And then I would propose to change the wording of two to design and maintain transportation systems and facilities that are resilient and adapted to a changing climate based on the best available science. And I can write this down for you as well. And then I would add an additional policy under that new bucket that would say incorporate safety measures to protect active transit users from current and future environmental hazards.
Did you get that right?
I can write that down. Yeah, I'll send you an email.
Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Edge, maybe give him a second to finish writing and then go ahead and jump in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can't see the room, so.
Go for it.
Oh, I won't know when you're, when you're done writing. Okay, cool. Um, the, uh, um, I've limited my comments to just, um, just the edits that are here. Um, I appreciate, uh, best available science, you know, a term that we use frequently throughout the conplan policies. And so it's appropriate, um, instead of current. Um, and then require, require facilities in the 100-year floodplain be designed for resilience. Honestly, if, if we're going to go that route, if we're not going to say something like, um, you know, avoid putting facilities in the floodplain in the first place. Um, if we're, we're just going to say that they need to be designed appropriately, then, um, then I think we should use the 500-year floodplain instead of the 100-year floodplain, which will not be a 500-year floodplain over the next century. Uh, we're, we're pretty sure. So anyway, with, uh, with those big rain events occurring more frequently, um, you know, the 500-year floodplain is going to be tapped out more often. So, um, we should make sure that our facilities are designed to be resilient in that larger basin rather than, um, only the 100-year floodplain, which we, we know will see action. I'm also curious about the, the one that was struck out here. Um, you know, I think that we do have policies in the conplan already that, um, you know, say that we want to, um, you know, maintain the availability, uh, after disasters of the active transportation, you know, network. And so, um, I'm just wondering why we strike that out here? Um, is it just because it doesn't have much relevance to project scoring? Or, um, you know, why, why would we remove this when it's consistent with other, other policies in the conplan?
Yeah, this one, um, right, because this is kind of a, a public works practice and what they do. And so we were not including the public works, uh, practices. Um, and also, um, I don't know, Ryan, if you remember the rest of the logic behind that.
No, I think that, that's it. I think it felt out of our control to some extent. Um, and yeah, like it didn't necessarily fit in this list, um, because it is more of a practice rather than something that we would use to score projects. And then on the, yeah, the required facilities in the 100-year floodplain to be designed for resiliency, that was originally, um, you know, that comes from, I think Commissioner Edge, as you know, comes from the comprehensive plan. Um, it was originally grouped under equity. Um, and we heard, um, and, and I think there's probably different ways to think about this. So I, yeah, encourage any discussion or any feedback you have. But, um, that there might be that A, we, we already do have facilities um, that are in the 100, 500-year floodplain. Um, and that B, there was maybe a, a conflict between, I think people, saw a conflict potentially between that it, you know, it might be an inequitable approach to, um, avoid any improvements um, in the 500 or 100-year floodplain, especially where there, um, might be vulnerable or underserved folks already living. Um, that we were basically saying, so I think the, the question was, so we, we won't be adding sidewalks in neighborhoods where, um, or we wouldn't be adding new connections where it, it might be, um, in that floodplain, but also serving, uh, vulnerable, um, roadway users. So I think that was the concern and, and, and I don't think we were very specific about the floodplain, um, uh, when it was grouped under the equity. So we, we tried to be, uh, yeah, more clear. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't know if that helps, if that's helpful context, but.
No, it does, that makes sense. And I saw those comments in the public feedbacks, you know, about, um, you know, the concerns about not putting improvements where, um, it, you know, where people are, you know, and if people happen to be in the, you know, natural hazard areas already, then, um, you know, we don't want to not build infrastructure, you know, equitably to them. I do think that avoid has a place here. Um, but, uh, you know, um, I, I appreciate that, you know, we're already largely built out and, um, you know, places, the facilities are where they are. And we're probably not going to have a whole lot of brand new ones. But, um, yeah, I, I still, I, I really encourage us to change that to 500-year floodplain. And then, um, I'd also try to find the word avoid. I try to, try to place the word avoid in there somewhere without kind of, um, triggering that same response, like, you know, what you were talking about, where, where people feel like we're going to avoid providing improvements to, to neighborhoods that might need them.
Chair Sherman.
Um, I think they were. Not, uh, getting into the 100-year versus 500-year floodplain. Um, I did want to, or not fully get into that, I guess. I did want to flag that, um, you know, the 100-year floodplain is like, you know, is a FEMA designated map. Uh, and is actually mostly known through as the, um, to get maybe extra wonky, is the special flood hazard area. Um, and so I think rather than use something like the 100-year, 100-year floodplain, we should just say something like, uh, special flood, designated special flood hazard area. Maybe then parentheses, 100-year floodplain or 500-year floodplain. I think the 500-year floodplain has a slightly different, um, S F H A designation. But, um, anyways, just on, on terminology there, wanted to, um, mention that. Um, oh, yeah, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're ready to move on to fiscal stewardship and system management. I think, I was just going to say that I think that there, in a couple of places, we've got to explore and utilize grants. And maybe this language is better suited for this bucket. So I would pull it out of the other ones and put it in this bucket, if that makes sense to you all.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we want to limit ourselves, um, to looking for grants. You know, we, we would such supply across the spectrum.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, Chair Sherman.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Um, you know, I think one, um, one thing that I was kind of grappling with as I was looking at this is, again, maybe the differentiation between what's a policy we use to score a project on a capital projects list and prioritize those projects versus like other city policy. projects versus like other city policy. And I think so maybe this fits into like the other city policy space. But I feel like when I go around town, I sometimes see some fairly crummy utility work that's been done in the right of way that like overall jeopardizes the quality and probably the overall lifespan of our assets. And maybe to get like more specific, you know, often you'll, a crew will be out tearing up the right of way to, whether it's a new gas line or a new water line or something like that. They, you know, put their stuff back down. And I feel like sometimes those patches and other things like they're doing there just really aren't very good quality. And then they don't last very long. And to me, so I, again, I feel like this is more on the scoring projects side of things than maybe, maybe this is a more public works-y kind of thing that I'm bringing up. But like, let's up our game here and let's ask or require or through enforcement, like make sure that people are really are, when they're doing work in the right of way, that they're, that they're bringing that the street's quality kind of back up to whatever our standard might be. Or frankly, if our standard isn't great enough, let's improve our standard. So that's just, that's probably one of my few comments here. But I think it'll help us doing things like that, which again, is maybe more operational, will help us have a more fiscally sound and better stewarded system overall.
Okay, thanks for making that point. And I think I would want to talk to engineering because I'm sure we do have certain standards. And so I just don't know what they are or so let me, let me just follow up with you on that one to where it would be best placed or addressed.
Commissioner Edge?
Thank you, Vice Chair. So I'm looking at this and wondering about number two, just the term adding capacity. I think we mean widening or adding lanes or something like that. I mean, maybe we can be a little bit more specific about what we mean. Because, you know, we can add capacity by shifting around, you know, the, you know, the layout of the cross section, you know, you can add capacity by allowing buses to speed past the traffic that's, you know, stops. And you're moving more people per, you know, per minute or per hour through, you know, that point of the transportation system than, you know, you are with, you know, two lanes of cars all stuck in traffic. So, you know, there's different ways of looking at capacity. And I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're using the language that reflects what we mean. And I think what we mean here is adding general purpose travel lanes for motor vehicle use. And so if that's what we mean, we should probably just say that because, I mean, I think, you know, what I'm getting at maybe is being viewed in this context as improving the efficiency of the existing transportation network. But I think we're talking about widening or adding motor vehicle lanes and, you know, as being the thing that we don't want to do. And maybe we should just be a little bit more clear about it.
Okay, point well, point well taken. Dare I say it, we'll go to the last page. Last page, starting off with economic.
I had one more thing about number four, because I'm really excited about number four. And I want to see there is, I want to, I want to see is execute these projects to implement solutions, not just identify them. I want to see us do them. And so, you know, is there some things, is there some way that we can frame this to try to be a little bit more, you know, I mean, again, I think language is important. A language we choose to use here, you know, is, you know, that we identify these things, but then they sit on a list and nothing happens with them. And I really want to see us do stuff with these low-cost, you know, projects and solutions.
I think to that point, we've used it in other places. We've used the word, the verb expand. I'd encourage maybe something like expand as the verb instead of identify.
Expand. Commissioner Sherman, explain that a little bit to me because I'm not sure what, identify sounds like we're looking to find out what the low-cost solutions are.
I think expand is like do more of them. So I guess to what Commissioner Edge was saying, it's beyond identify. It's like, go do them. And I guess expand is like, do more of them. But.
Maybe use something like utilize, utilize low costs. So it's more an actual word like, I don't know.
Can I maybe propose another option, which is at the end. So we say, monitor the results of those solutions. Maybe there we could put identify opportunities to scale or something similar. So that we're saying like, we're not just monitoring, we're also trying to find opportunities to build on that success. Maybe that gets at the same issue.
I like utilize.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I like, I think I like the combination of utilize and, and also what Commissioner Carpenter has said, I'm sorry, the, hanging on a little bit extra at the end there, sorry.
Yep. Okay, great. Okay, moving on to economic vitality.
Commissioner Edge?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Super appreciating the number four here. This was one I was trying to get into our climate chapter of the conplan, was really trying to figure out how we can expand opportunities for local businesses to access, you know, freight rail. You know, and so I appreciate seeing that here. But then. Oh, I just lost my thought. Hopefully someone else has something to say and you can come right back to me.
I'll jump right in, Vice, Commissioner Edge. I think one thing I was kind of thinking about here, and I actually had it as a note, in regional coordination as well, is how, how are we working with kind of our partners in, say, our urban growth management area on projects they might be doing. But again, we might then somehow be over time inheriting some of those facilities. And so I'm just kind of, that's, I guess, a question as, and maybe that's, maybe it's irrelevant for right here. But I was just kind of, I was thinking about it in the economic vitality section, especially just, yeah, thinking about jobs and connections to jobs. But maybe it's also getting late.
Well, I can, I can say that at least on some of the bigger projects, we usually have somebody that sits on the committee that's going through like the work that's been happening, you know, on, planning on 99, there's been some coordination and sitting on an advisory group there. So it's kind of depends on the project, how big it is, where it is. And then the city does get involved to the extent that it has the resources to be engaged in the project. But yeah, we do try to do that whenever we have the opportunity.
Okay, great. Yeah, thanks. And also want to say, whoever wrote policy number five really knows their audience, given that's something I'm working on at work right now. So kudos, probably you, Ryan, or Laura, for doing that. Appreciate it.
Who knows where that came from at this point? It's, we've looked at them so many times and been through so many iterations. But we'll take it. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Glad we have that.
Commissioner Edge, did it come back to you?
Yeah, thank you. I'll just say as well, I appreciate number five there. I like seeing that here. And it kind of ties into what I'm bringing up, which is, I mean, I guess maybe this could fit into a couple of the other policies, number one and two maybe. But, but you're really trying to make sure that we have a policy to bring protected bikeways to our commercial districts or low-stress bikeways directly into the hearts of our commercial districts. You know, we can't just get people within a couple blocks and say, well, that's good enough. I think that we need to, you know, really try to bring safe active transportation connections directly into, you know, our, our commercial districts and, you know, or even our neighborhood commercial districts. So I'd love to see a policy that really gets at that, you know, and, you know, when we're talking, and the economic part of this, again, really is that people who show up and shop on bike spend more money over, you know, the course of time than people who show up by car. And so, you know, there is a business vitality, you know, local, smaller business vitality component to this policy of making sure that there's, you know, suitable and ample facilities for people to reach our local businesses by biker foot.
And so Commissioner Edge, you don't think that, do you think that number one gets at that? Or does it need to be more explicit?
I mean, I feel like, maybe I feel like when I read this, that I intuit that it would be part of that policy. But maybe having it be spelled out would be more clear for, you know, people who maybe aren't up on the research.
Okay. All right, you can take a look at it. Okay. Are we going to move on? Okay, oops, sorry.
Sorry, sorry, Laura. I mean, with Commissioner Edge, and this is an aside, so I'm happy to just like preface it by that and say, let's figure out how to talk about it or when. I think with what Commissioner Edge was just talking about in terms of economic vitality and active modes, connect, you know, connecting people on active modes to, to places where they might live, work, shop, those kinds of things. Also, so here's the aside, I'm also reminded, like, looking at the city of Milwaukee bike map, like, we actually don't have any bike facilities that cut north, south and downtown Milwaukee. And that feels like a pretty big gap. And, you know, and I guess when I think about other facilities around town, I know there's been a lot of conversation on and off over the years about Stanley and should, is Stanley a neighborhood greenway? And should it be? And, you know, what could other connections be? You know, I don't know, again, as an aside, when we want to talk about things like the bike map. But I think it directly kind of connects into things that Commissioner Edge is just saying of helping people feel, feel, feel safe and protected is like a core part of a lot of facilities. So I'll stop there because I know it's off topic, but I just wanted to kind of mention that. And I guess it would be helpful to hear, you know, when, when and if we might have conversations about, does the map that we have going to be the map that we have for the next 20 years?
Yeah, we're going to have those conversations later this summer. Basically, the consultants spending the summer, looking at all of our existing infrastructure and doing an analysis of like, where are the gaps? Where are the gaps in the system? What is missing? And then we'll go out and also talk to folks about where they think the gaps in the system are. Because we can do the technical analysis, right? We can do that part. But we want to go out and talk to people that may be able to tell us something that we don't know from the data that we have, like where are the desire lines, right? Or where are the shortcuts that people take that we don't have any infrastructure for them? So we're going to be talking to people about that over the summer. And then in the fall, we'll be coming up with solutions. So those yes will be all part of those conversations, Commissioner Sherman.
Commissioner Phil Meyer?
Yes. Number three, I feel like we talked about the metro and TriMed and the public system, but said to underserved employment areas. But I feel like also, I don't know, like that connectivity that you guys are talking with the bike and systems, I think it needs to be kind of probably emphasized with, between the living areas and the economic areas development that I don't, I feel like the, I don't know how to, I think it does send us this meeting that kind of what that means about a connectivity for the transportation system, for the transit also and walking in that case. But I know, I understand that number one, it talks about identify new projects and improve the existing transportation infrastructure, like it's more broad. But I feel like if the, when they talked about the metro and TriMed, kind of, maybe we can be more specific also about that connectivity between those, those areas. I don't know how to stand on that one, but.
Yep, understand. Point well taken. Yep, we can add some language around that. Okay, I think we're going on to our parking, not parking goal, some new goal. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that yet. But maybe we can, we can think about that a little bit. But let's get in, let's talk about the policies, maybe, and we can try to come up with something a little bit different than just parking, unless somebody has some brilliant idea right off the top of your head. I'd be welcome, that would be a welcome thought. So anyway.
Commissioner Edge, start us off.
You, Vice Chair. So, I mean, kind of a question, I guess. What transportation projects are really impacted by this goal? Just theoretically, what transportation projects would be impacted by this goal?
Well, they're not really, it's more of kind of a program. It's really about not transportation projects as much, but how we're managing parking in the city with development that comes in, I think.
Yeah, from a project prioritization standpoint, yeah.
You're correct.
None. I, yeah.
But we are required to have parking management strategies, right? This is something that is included in the metro functional plan. It's part of that. And what do you want to say? And CPEC actually has part of this with the.
Yeah, I think this maybe falls a little bit into this sort of category of goals or policies of things we are already doing or are required to do or acknowledge in the plan, but does not, yeah, will not directly likely play any role in the ranking of projects.
And so maybe I feel like we've a few times talked, or I've at least a few times talked to any commissioner edge as well of like, a few times there's like policies that don't seem like they fit here. And they seem like they fit in like a standard operating procedures policies list that's not project specific, but are still like things we care about and overarching kind of like direction, policy of the city of Milwaukee. And so I wonder if pulling, just like pulling these out and saying they're going to go over there with maybe some of these other things would maybe make the most sense.
I don't have the exact answer to that question yet, but let's think about it a little bit.
It is, I have big notes on my notepad, given at this point.
And with that, should we move on to safety?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm trying to figure out what policies go in here that aren't, you know, that are really specific to the transportation system. planning and not like, you know, land use planning, you know, because it's, you know, there's, one of the things I keep harping on, you know, and you'll, this will ring a bell as soon as I say it, is trying to make sure that in new developments, that the parking areas are organized in a way that they can be redeveloped later, you know, for new buildings or parks or, you know, whatever. But have things be organized into, you know, the city grid and have those parking areas be set aside within that city grid rather than just around the perimeter of a building or, you know, whatever. And so, is that where this goes? You know, or is that, does that belong, you know, more in the other chapters of the comp plan, you know, that, you know, as I'm trying to figure out where, again, when we're talking, it is what Chair Sherman was saying, you know, how are we organizing these policies? What policies go where? You know, it's, you know, this is a collection of policies that are around, you know, how we're using land for parking, or making sure that we're using less land for parking, or that that land has, you know, land that is used for parking has better utility in the future than under current, you know, practices. And so I feel like what I just described would be a great policy to go in here. But is that duplicative? Or does it, you know what I mean? It's like, is it, does it really belong here?
I think, I think this is one of those that really does, I think what you said is right, is that this is where, this is about land use and how we're managing land and how we're trying to managing the amount of parking that's going on and freeing up land for other things and making sure that we don't overpark. So, and we do actually do a lot of these things already, and they, these policies kind of get translated into our development code. And so I do think that that even though it's not about the transportation system itself, it does impact the land use. And so I do think that they should still be in this set of goals and policies. I think, and I agree with you, Commissioner Edge, that your point about reusing, trying to plan to reuse existing parking for other uses when things redevelop is a valid, would be a good policy to put in this bucket of policies. I think that the only, and correct me if I'm wrong, but really the only other non kind of priority ranking policy that we had in here was the maintenance policy. Everything else is kind of directly about ranking projects. They do all fall into that bucket with that one exception and with this collection of policies. But I do think that these policies actually help us in our land use code. Because we can point back to this and say, well, it says we need to facilitate shared parking agreements. We want to make sure that's happening. And even though we don't require parking in most places anymore now, there we have a tiny little sliver and we won't have any pretty soon. But if there is the opportunity to help people utilize parking in different ways for people who do want parking, it's like when you have a church that's next to something else at the school. So how can we share that parking instead of creating more parking when people want to create, when people need the spaces or are going to want them? So I do, I understand the point, but I actually think that these are a good set of policies that we need to have in this.
Okay, that makes sense. Is there room here for a little bit more detail around, like the policy that I was mentioning, wanting to find a home for, which is that new parking areas should be located and designed so that they are not integrated with state development, but are instead set, you know, organized out to where they can be redeveloped later?
Well, so that would be, I mean, that is an interesting question. We have that. So I'm thinking about for like, say, for instance, for cottage clusters. Like, that's where it's tricky, because with cottage clusters, the land use code is actually set up to have the pattern in one way. And so they're around, it's pretty unlikely that you're going to be able to have a parking space convert to a housing space and then still meet the standards of the cottage cluster code, if that makes sense. If you remember, kind of like, it's very specific, the standards in cottage.
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess I was thinking more in terms of like, again, there's a certain pre-application conference report that I reviewed recently that showed a sea of parking that does not currently exist. And, you know, how, you know, how could the, how could a policy here be shaped to encourage that parking to be organized in a way that makes it easier to convert to other uses later?
Yeah. I mean, that's a really great point. So let's think about that a little bit. We can think about that. I mean, in that particular, that particular project, there's a lot of space that could just, new buildings could go up there pretty easily. But then it's kind of like, how is that going to conflict with our existing code later? Anyway, it's something that we'll think about, we'll think about a little bit about how feasible that is, because I do agree with you that it's a really good idea when we are creating these new big areas for parking. And granted, that's not going to happen very often. Like, that's probably it, as far as big parking in town, right? We're not going to be doing much more of that. But if it did come up in the future, it would be smart to think about how we could convert that later. So let us think about how we might be able to work a policy.
Yeah, there's a few big parking areas on 82nd Avenue that are in the UGMA that could theoretically be, you know, annexed and redeveloped. And, you know, you could foresee some of those parking areas ending up with, you know, a kind of new grid of, you know, of local streets, you know, whether they be private or public is, you know, a later decision, you know what I mean? But, but you, you know, you could see how some of those larger parking lots could be divvied up into kind of a grid, a street grid. And, you know, and making sure that the policies support those outcomes, I think, is, would be very wise at this point with how, how much limited large areas we do have left to develop.
Commissioner Edge, if you have seen any development standards that speak to this type of concern, I would love to see those. I don't know if that's something that you've come across?
I feel like the City of Portland Downtown Design Guidelines would be like where I'm thinking of this. But let me see what I can find. If that doesn't give you enough direction, let me, let me look for it and see what I can find and send you an email.
Great. Appreciate that.
Okay. Safety is the last one of the night.
I might maybe start with number eight. I would maybe split that into two and the second part being move the city towards zero traffic deaths or serious injuries on the roadway network. And then I would actually change that from move toward to achieve or realize or something more specific. I think we're setting policies. I don't think it hurts to be aspirational and to say that that's what we want instead of just moving toward it. So that would just be, I know it's mostly symbolic, but that's what I was saying.
I guess I feel like I had a question on this one, a few questions. You know, number nine, maintain a neighborhood traffic management program. I guess I'm a little unaware of, unaware of what our neighborhood traffic management program is. And so it feels hard to kind of say, yeah, we should keep doing that. So, yeah, Laura, Ryan, I don't know if you have anything there. Or go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, correct me if I'm wrong, but do you think that this is getting at the SPOT program that's going to be, you know, that is ultimately going to be developed?
Maybe that is the reference. Yeah. I mean, that would make, I see, I see a logical connection between those things, but I don't know if that's what's being referenced or not.
Okay, I will clarify that with the engineers. But I think that, I think that between the Public Safety Advisory Committee and the SPOT program, that's probably getting at, that's probably what this is referencing. So we'll see if we can do a little bit of clarification around that. Ryan, do you want to say?
Yeah, my understanding was that it was the Public Safety Advisory Committee is what it was referencing.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. Thanks. That's, that's helpful. You know, we had talked about it somewhere else. It was about connectivity on local streets, but, or minimize cut-through traffic on local streets under mobility accessibility and connectivity. I also feel like, just including here, a policy around, Commissioner Mulholland said it nice, I think, about reducing speed on, on local service streets would be, would be a great policy to just, you know, kind of clearly, clearly put out. I kind of had, I had another kind of comment. I was, one thing I was thinking about, I feel like we've kind of grappled with is, and this kind of goes to mode split targets of, I don't know if we've emphatically said that we have a hierarchy or a preference for how people get around or should get around in the city. I know that's something others around the world have done, where they've come out and kind of clearly said, you know, we want people walking, we want people biking, we want people taking transit, then we want people getting in their cars, kind of in that order. And we're going to try and prioritize our work in that sort of way. I don't know if we've had that conversation through the TSP, but when I think about all of our other guiding policy documents, including but not limited to the comprehensive plan, I think those things are there. And I think it would be helpful for us to kind of articulate some sort of prioritization so that when, you know, our city engineers are having to make our choices about what's in and what's out, they can kind of go back to some sort of touchstone. And so I guess I would maybe suggest adding in, either adding in as a policy, but again, it feels not like a project criteria, maybe it is a project criteria, but of creating some sort of transportation hierarchy or prioritization strategy, just so that we're clear. I think with that, I'll stop.
That's a, I think that's a good observation and something that we can try to address.
Commissioner Edge?
Thank you, Mr. Yeah, I think the modal hierarchy would be a good thing to formalize. And, you know, and I think it also helps people understand, you know, their responsibilities a little bit better. You know, I'm on a bike, I must yield to people who are walking. You know, you know, it's not just everybody that's not in a car versus the cars, you know, I mean, there's, there's lots of complex interactions. And so communicating that more purposefully, I think, would be helpful in a lot of different ways. I would really appreciate seeing some very strong, if only aspirational, language around Vision Zero and, you know, actually trying, making it our goal to try to achieve zero deaths and serious injuries on our road network, I think is important. I don't think that we should limit that to only vulnerable road users. I think, you know, everybody should feel safe using this transportation system, even if you are in a car or, you know, on a bus or whatever. So I really think that's important. Number, I see number six crossed out here, and I kind of want to know why. You know, ultimately, it's like, I almost, I want a policy in here, let's say it, I want a policy in here so that when someone driving a car does something stupid and drives up on a sidewalk and either hurt someone or could have hurt someone, that their insurance has to pay for hardened infrastructure in that spot where they screwed up so that that can't happen again. You know, and I realize that's a little punitive and probably unconstitutional, so we won't actually do that. But, you know, it's like, I'm trying to get to this point where, you know, we're recognizing the flaws in the design of our transportation system and then being forced to wrestle with and address, you know, mitigate those flaws as close to in real time as possible, you know. And obviously, you know, we have a limited budget, so we can only do so much to react. You know, it's just why I made the flipside comment about making bad drivers use their turns to do it. But, you know, it's like, I want to get there. I want to shorten this, the time between something bad happening and something bad happening again at the same spot. And I feel like number six encroaches on that a little bit, but I'd like to, I wanted to come here and advocate for that to be even stronger language, but here it is crossed out. So I'm fighting to get it put back on the list, apparently. So to help me understand why it was removed and why we can't use stronger language around things like that. And then I think I still have a couple more comments.
I think it was found to be redundant or duplicative of number eight.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. I guess that's.
And we're going to split them up, I think, based on Commissioner Mulholland's comments as well about moving or achieving or whatever the word we figure out to the city towards zero traffic deaths and language around Vision Zero.
Okay, cool. And then, and this probably is already kind of wrapped up in probably number two or three. But, you know, the opportunity to use green infrastructure, you know, bioswells or street trees or, you know, other kinds of green treatments as buffers for vulnerable road users, you know, that, maybe just seeing that called out specifically might, might be kind of good here. But the other thing I wanted to call out is, and I realize that we don't have a lot of, you know, country roads or, you know, roads going through the forest or whatever. But even within our urban context, it's, I think it's important to link safety with reducing wildlife vehicle collisions. And so I'd love to see something, you know, around that in here as well, because that, you know, ultimately is a, you know, it is a safety issue. When, you know, wildlife cross the street and present themselves as a hazard when they do, you know, often. And so, you know, that's, that's something that we have policies in the comp plan around trying to improve, you know, habitat connectivity and wildlife movement corridors. And so, you know, tying that in here to, you know, specifically improve, you know, safety by reducing those collisions, I think would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to, on number one, coordinate with ODOT in Clackamas County. I guess I, I guess I don't think I ever really knew this. So Laura, so the county maintains Johnson Creek?
Yes. It's there.
I feel like I picked that up through maybe a few land use things, but I've never fully got the dot connected there.
Yep.
You know, I guess when I think about number one, maybe in the world, in the world of stronger language, I would maybe suggest we think about replacing coordinate and coordinate with, and maybe we use advocate for, advocate for ODOT in Clackamas County to create safe and comfortable pedestrian. I understand that's probably what we do in our coordination activities, but maybe we could be a little less bureaucratic and say more emphatically, like, we need you all to, like, raise the bar here. So I just wanted to jump in and say that. And sorry, Commissioner Foulmer, I didn't see your hand was up when I jumped in. Apologies on that. Apologies on that.
Good, Commissioner. Go ahead.
Thank you. I wondered, one other thing that I, I was reading here tonight, just because I live it, in the street where I live, I, I have that constantly in there, and I don't know what the terminology is, but the vision for crossing, like, when a car is coming and there are, there's not a clear vision in that corner where pedestrians are crossing and there is, yeah, elements are blocking the view of the car, incoming car, that creates a hazard right there, like, leave here in 35th and Washington, and they're crossing right after, which is 34th and Washington, has a lot of blockage. And every time I'm passing by, I have to, like, stop and be careful because people, even though it's a stop sign, people don't see that a car comes because it's not, also, so like, what, there is not a language here about that clear vision in the corners for the safety and how we can, we should prioritize that when we, when we establish, I don't know, in the projects that we're doing, like the Washington Street Improvement right now going on, like, what are the things that have been, are they being prioritized or not? And understand the sidewalk, the crossing and all that, but what are these, all the things within this for projects that are coming that we can identify or, I don't know, where that can fit within this, any of this policies?
Yeah, that's a good point. And I know that we, I mean, we do have very stringent clear vision standards in the city, so we actually go out and do measurements. And if, like, there are things in the way, like, we ask people to trim their bushes and their trees because there's not clear vision. So there is kind of a requirement to do that, but we could probably craft some language. And Brian, you, you know a lot about, maybe more about clear vision standards than I do, but I think that we could craft some language about clear vision standards, yes.
Yeah, and I think mostly depends on the area, of course, but in, like, residential areas, it sometimes can be more lacking because of the parking and where people park their vehicles. So those are kind of affecting some of the critical areas. And maybe in commercial spaces, it's easier to get them to follow the rules. Anyway, yeah, I just think that's missing in here. That's the main thing.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Edge?
Thank you. Yeah, one last question on the section, and I think it's the last one question. The improved circulation around schools to minimize conflicts. Do we, would this be the place to put in a reference to transportation demand management programs for schools or, or, you know, those kinds of facilities? I mean, this is a really chronic problem, you know, with, with schools, you know, this happens with schools everywhere. So it's not like, I, I mean, this will continue to be a problem at schools. So when there are transportation, you know, when there are tangential projects to, to that, should we be exploring TDMs with, you know, with these large demand generators? So that's, you know, we can make sure that they're not crushing our system and making it unusable for other people or, you know, at different times of day.
Yes. I think that, I mean, I don't, I, I'd like to avoid, like, always requiring that a transportation demand, you know, a, a transportation management, because sometimes they're just not warranted depending on what the traffic is doing. So I think that, I think that we do a pretty good job of this already through our land use process. But let me think about, I understand exactly what you're saying, Commissioner Edge, because obviously we've talked about this many times. So let me think a little bit about what might be some good language to add.
Chair Sherman?
Yeah, thanks. I mean, somewhat, I think building on that, you know, I mean, maybe there, maybe improved circulation is something to keep, but maybe there's also, like, as Commissioner Edge was suggesting about, like, you know, reduce, reduce demand for getting your kids to school in cars, you know? So it's, and, and this is where, again, I feel like struggle with this list being policy first selecting capital projects versus, like, there could be programmatic things that could be done. And so, you know, thinking about support bike buses, support walking to school, support, you know, I think it was folks up in Hector Campbell that, maybe, maybe I'm wrong there, that, you know, have gone and done a, a safe routes to school plan, but they wrote a grant and got it for, for their schools. Like, maybe we should have safe routes to school plans for all the schools in Milwaukee. I feel like there's a lot of things in, in, like, the safety world that they, they are about infrastructure and they're also about, about kind of programs. And I don't know when we kind of talk about that, but I think, I'd like to make sure we have room for a conversation as a planning commission to get in on that.
Yes, I think that you are correct in that I do believe that those, those kinds of policies should be included in this. If it's, I know we've been focused on that, is it just about prioritizing projects, but it's twofold, right? It's about programs that we, as, as the Community Development Department are kind of in the control of as opposed to say, what is going on with the Public Works Department? It's kind of like these two different things. So within community development, is there the opportunity to talk more about, you know, programs, developing campaigns, you know, slow the flock down, like, you know, how are we kind of promoting that and how can we get some language in here about that? I think that that's a point well taken and, and maybe we just need to think about that a little, a little bit more.
Commissioner, if you want more?
Yeah, I just quickly want to just add because you mentioned mainly, like, elementary or, or middle schools, but the high school, which is, it's still kids, they still have to cross, and they come from all over the city. And many times come actually from outside the city. And they have many different type of transportation they use. My kid has friends that comes all the way from North Portland all the way here in a public transportation. So those kind of goes a little beyond that just this small grant system, so should be also be considering that process.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. All right, eh?
I put in some proposed language, kind of off of what Commissioner Mulholland said for the number eight, just for the second breakout.
Yeah.
Just take a look at.
Oh, you put some in the chat? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you, can you see the chat? Obviously, I did, I put, "Implement strategies to achieve zero traffic deaths or serious injuries on the roadway network."
Okay.
Are, are other people seeing it? I have not seen it.
Okay. It's "Implement strategies to achieve zero traffic deaths or serious injuries on the roadway network."
Okay. I think we got it.
Apparently I sent it to Commissioner Sherman, not everyone.
So you can see it now, right?
No, that's why we got it. Thank you.
Okay, I'll type and paste it in.
Okay, thanks.
There it is. Perfect.
That was our only secret chat tweet.
Yes.
For the record.
Uh-huh. I'm not trying to buy it, I don't know.
Commissioner Edge?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I might actually be done after just a couple comments, but with respect to coordinating with ODOT in Clackamas County, is there perhaps a place here to have a policy to try to get Clackamas County or, and/or ODOT to kind of build their roadways to city standards in the UGMA at least?
No, the answer is no. Sorry, it's a great idea, but it's a no. I wish, but it, it, it won't happen. They have the authority on their own roads.
Well, yeah, I know, I know they do. And, and I mean, really the UGMA is the place to, you know, draft the agreements between, you know, who, who will be responsible for what and, you know, what standards will, will be used and all of that. You know, Denny, your predecessor, Laura, had talked quite a bit about trying to secure an agreement with the county to, you know, do land use reviews in the UGMA according to city standards and, and plan designations. Obviously, you, you need to update the UGMA before that can, you know, that would actually, you know, happen. And then that's not something that's been prioritized, even, you know, in the several years since that elapsed, so.
I did work on it, just so you know, that was one of the things I did work on when I got here, but there wasn't an appetite on either side of the table to have that conversation at this time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, yes, but I, I just, just from my experience with those agreements, it's very hard to get the county to follow any of the things that the city, that city standards, they have their own, because they have to pay for their own projects and do their own work. And so us putting kind of rules on them that we're not going to pay for, they're very unlikely to do that. Even with land use review, it's a tricky, it's a tricky slope, but.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I, I know. I was just, you know, I was just wondering if this might be, might be the place to do that. I realize it's not something that, it's not binding, you know, obviously, we, you know, we put it here, it doesn't bind them to do anything any different. It just means that we would try to, try to get them to, to do, to do better, hopefully. But, but yeah, I get that. So the only other thing on that is kind of separate, but for facilities like Johnson Creek or like Linwood that are, you know, north of King Road, that are county facilities, you know, there's, the county is doing their walk bike plan update right now, and then they're doing their own TSP update next year. And so those are the opportunities for the city to advocate on behalf of, you know, its residents and businesses' interests because our, you know, we don't, maybe don't often think that when we use Linwood and, you know, cross over King Road, that we're, you know, changing jurisdictions.
Of course.
And, you know, we just use the network, the system that's there. And so, anyway, it'd be, it'd be great for the city to actually be actively advocating to make sure that the, that the, the rest of the transportation system that connects the city to the rest of the region is also complete and safe.
Yes, thank you. And just so, just so you're aware, and you probably already are aware of this, Clackamas County is on our technical committee for the TSP. So we talked to them, they're reviewing everything that we're doing, and I imagine that we will also be on their TSP technical committee. So there'll be times to have those conversations.
Well, and, and maybe it goes back to the coordination, the boring, the boring category of coordination with local, regional and state partners, but, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Edge bringing it up because, remember, I was actually talking with one of our PSEC members recently, who was talking about just on our section of Linwood where we put in the, the bike ped route, and then the county just finished up theirs, you know, took a year and a half or two years later. But the sign markings and the flow markings for cyclists and pedestrians, they differ from our infrastructure to the county's infrastructure. And that's like super confusing, and that's also the kind of thing where I like to think the collective we should have gotten on the same page and made sure that, like, our arrows look the same and are on the same side of the street as one another, so that just like a user experiencing it has a consistent, a consistent experience and doesn't get confused. And, you know, that doesn't rise the level of, like, mega infrastructure project, but I think is really spot on, some of what Commissioner Edge was saying. So maybe you can relay some of that particular experience to the folks on your TAC, but like, we should really tighten it up there and, and, and maybe even on, in the world of, of safety, like, if, you know, if, for example, the county isn't going to follow some of our standards, like, maybe we should talk with them about, like, can we take possession of Johnson Creek Boulevard? I don't know if we want to from a liability perspective in terms of how well maintained it is, but, you know, maybe there's a, a policy to think of there in terms of, in, to consider.
Yep, it's a good, it's a good question. It's a complicated, it's a complicated answer, right? When we want to actually advocate for taking over roadway jurisdictions and what the costs that are associated with that, so, yeah.
But, yeah, maybe a policy for negotiating jurisdictional transfer of, you know, important streets, you know, within the UGMA, you know, is appropriate.
I can explore that a little bit with engineering, and then also that would, I mean, ultimately, city council, that's a thing that they would want to, they'll weigh in on all of this as well, just like you all are doing right now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And since we're wrapping up, the, the addendum to that is that Clackamas County actually has some budget for ad hoc, like, low cost treatments, and they delegate kind of some of the prioritization to their pedestrian bikeway advisory committee, which I'm appointed to. So if there's any priorities on county roadways adjacent to the city or within the city that, you know, could be looked at, feel free to email me with those or, or email the county about those because there, there might actually be opportunities for the county to do some low cost treatments to do, you know, improvements on streets that might make a difference, even if they're not in city limits.
Yep.
Chair Sherman, as we wrap things up, let's.
Wrapping, wrapping, wrapping it up, I asked to not share so I didn't have to talk a lot, and then I spent a ton of time talking, so Vice Chair Freeman, I owe you coffee. You know, just to maybe put a, a final plug in on safety and thinking about particularly ODOT facilities, 9090, 224. And again, I don't know if it fits here as, as at least is currently structured, more of like prioritizing capital projects, but I would really, I think many in the community would appreciate a conversation about safety on those facilities as they, as they cross through our city and what we can do to make those facilities safer. And by safer, I mean slow traffic down. You know, not, not too long ago, I went out to Newburgh to, to visit some family, and I remember driving through Walleton on, on their facilities, on their, their state roads in their city. They have red light cameras and speed cameras, I think, at almost every intersection in their, in their city. And you know what? You slow down and you pay attention. And as I think about maybe our vision for, like, downtown Milwaukee, those cars are slowing down and paying attention so people can, you know, mill about and get from the downtown to the river and back or from their, their bikes. And, you know, as, I think as we think about the Central Milwaukee Plan, the Central Milwaukee Bike Way Plan in downtown, I think, again, we're trying to facilitate better connections across, across Highway 224. And I think some, some actions like red light cameras or speed cam, and speed cameras on that facility would also be exceptionally helpful. I realize there's costs associated with the time for law enforcement to review those tickets and write those tickets. I do think there's some solutions that have been proposed in the last few years that have now gone through that make it easier for civilians or trained civilians to do some of that work. And I know there's costs to, like, buy that equipment, but I think it would be a great thing to figure out how to kind of include here in the safety space. So wanted to just kind of throw that into the hopper one last time.
Yep, I, a point well taken. I agree, I think we can come up with some language around that. around that. I think I've said that a lot. We have a lot of language to come up with, Ryan. Yeah. Um... All right. So is that, we're going to call it quits on, on that one? We're good?
Yeah, I think we can, uh, close that session down. I think we did some good work tonight. Uh, thank you for presenting. Thank you, Commissioners, for putting in, uh, the work and the input and the comments. Uh, let's see, going back to our agenda, let's see. Uh, I think we're at item number seven, uh, Planning Department Commissioners, any other business? Do Commissioners have any other business or discussion?
Um, maybe just real fast, I think I've said it before, but, um, Commissioners, if you have any summer vacations or travel planned or anything like that, it's also helpful just to, like, get those things to Laura in advance. So as she's working on the calendar a few months ahead, um, she can kind of manage, manage quorum.
Yeah, great. Thanks for bringing that up. That's, that would be awesome.
Uh, just real quick, uh, the one thing I have is, uh, uh, next month on June 15th, the, a couple, a few community members are planning the Fourth Annual, uh, Milwaukee Juneteenth Event at, uh, Ball, Ballmer Shore Park, uh, between 11:00 and, 11:00 AM and for, uh, 3:00 PM. Uh, please come on down and, uh, celebrate the holiday. And let's see, item number eight, forecast and future meetings.
Ah, yes. Okay. So originally, we had some items, uh, scheduled for the 28th, but we're gonna not do those on the 28th. And so our next meeting will be June 11th. Um, we've got three hearings that night. Um, and then, so we're talking about the, um, downtown design review, the food park, um, at the next door to City Hall is coming in. Um, we've got a variance request and we've got, um, the Campbell, uh, School Elementary Site is being, uh, converted to a charter school and starting to be reused again. So, which is pretty exciting. So we're going to bring those to you on June 11th. And then we have tentatively some more natural resources code on the 25th. We'll see how that goes. And then looking out, I think for the CIAC, we may end up trying to put a couple of items on the July nights. So we can talk about the CIAC along with a couple of other things. And that's the forecaster.
Great. Okay, um, there's nothing else. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Um, let's see, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks a lot. Good night.
Have a good night.